Mr. Weatherspoon.
Here.
Mr. Rowena.
Here.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Mancini.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
And Mr. Scholman.
Here.
I think I got everybody.
Do you?
I think so, too. So, I'd ask, I only, I only see two people, faces of two people. And I don't know who you represent. I just asked that if you don't represent, if you're not representing Public Works in their presentation, I just ask that you stop your video until we call on the item that you'll be presenting this evening. With that, let me quickly go over the, the rules for a public hearing. The applicant or the applicant's representative, in this case, it will be the Board of Education, will make the presentation regarding their project. Commission members at any time during the presentation are welcome to ask questions. Once that presentation's been completed, we will invite in the public for comments. Mr. Baker, at the appropriate time, will explain how that's done, how you can raise, raise your hand in order to be recognized and you'll be given as much time as you require to make your comments either for or against the project. Once everyone from the public who wishes to comment has had an opportunity to comment, the Board of Education or the representative will have an opportunity to respond to those comments. Again, members of the commission will be welcome at any time to ask questions. But once every member of the public who wishes to speak has spoken, there will be no further opportunity at this hearing for the public to comment. If for some reason you didn't say everything you had to say, you're certainly welcome to send a note to the zoning staff. But it's likely this evening that we will at least discuss this application and possibly take action on the application as well. So again, if you're a member of the public, take all the time you need to make your presentation, making, making all the points that you think are, are relevant. Again, the, the final stage will be the Board of Education or their representative responding to the issues that have been raised during the public portion of the hearing. With that, let me call to order a public hearing, 2021-07, SP Department of Public Works, 288 Highland Avenue, install new lights and athletic field conversion at Bryan McMahon High School. And I welcome those folks who are making the presentation to start, start your video. And let's begin the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. I'm Vanessa Valadari, Principal Engineer, GPW Department. So this application that is in front of you for public hearing is a request from Rexon Parks Department with assistance of GPW. So what we, the request is that we are turning the softball field at Bryan McMahon into a turf field, and we would like to add lights to the project so the girls can have the same conditions as the boys with the same lighting that they have on the baseball field. I just want to also tell you that we already went for a variance for this project that got, we, we had it granted. So now we are for a special permit in front of you. We have sent all the notifications to the residents that abuts the property. And I believe you also have that confirmation with you. And with us today, we have Kevin Ken Cooks from Rexon Parks. And also our consultants, Jeff from Stan Tech, and also our lighting consultant. And so with that, I'm gonna pass to Jeff so he can give you a little overview of the project and then we're open to hear for the public.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Vanessa. Can everyone see my screen? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so this presentation is going to be similar to last time, but run through it as quickly as can and hopefully less than half the time as last. So as Vanessa indicated, this is the existing softball field at Bryan McMahon. And the, the proposed effort is to convert this field to natural turf, or I'm sorry, to artificial turf with proposed sports lighting and other amenities that would be comparable to what the boys have. Waiting sort of the site, the elements, the components, the proper size and conditioning and sort of some of the elements with relation to Highland Ave. And the residence property of the South, we took a look at a few options associated with the proposed layout. This layout shown here would essentially leave the backstop where it is right now. It would expand the limits of the field to allow for a practice field hockey field, but improve the amenities, including prepared dugouts and bullpens, ADA bleachers and accessible routes all the way around. And most importantly, sports lighting. And you can see those located in these locations here around the field. And in looking at the light levels and then taking into consideration, you know, sort of, most of the noise really comes from the backstop area of a ball field. A lot of players, you know, that home plate is obviously, and the dugouts are right there. Most of the noise is generated from that area. So we looked at an alternative to basically mirror this to the other side. And this is the, has become the preferred layout. This moves the, the, you know, the, the large noise areas away from the properties further into the high school site. And it also allows us to, to reduce the number of light poles that are there and also reduce some of the light spill on beyond the property line, which Vanessa said noted that we already got a variance for. So, you know, understanding the, the light levels, and I apologize that the numbers are inverted, but I wanted to keep the orientation the same as what you just saw. But you can see the, the light poles noted here. And the, the city's requirement is a, is a point three light level. And when we went to ZBA to get the variance, we've indicated, you know, the, that these light levels are regardless of any screening, regardless of any existing vegetation, regard, regarding, regardless of any geography changes between, you know, our site and the residential properties in Highland Avenue here. The reason why is because it has to have a, you know, the calculation is done with a sheer cutoff. And these are the numbers right at it, but do not take into account existing vegetation of which is right here and distance from this property line to Highland and then ultimately to the properties on the eastern side here. I'm sorry, western side. So this is a, this is a photorealistic rendering of what we anticipate the light spill would be based on the light levels that we have right now. Now, again, this is a, it's a rendering. It's, it's not meant to be exact, but it's meant to show an understanding of how effective the cutoff lights, the technology is right now for sports lighting. And the fact that we don't have any lights along this property line, we do have them in proximity, but the way they're cut off would leave, you know, a far less light level trespass along this side.
Does, does this lighting plan take into account existing plantings and foliage? Or is it like the earlier one you showed us?
No, it's, it's much similar to the earlier one that we showed because it's, it's very difficult without understanding tree heights and spill. We have to use the, sort of the, we have to use the data, the data that we're given in order to generate this. And this is, again, this is a photo rendering. It's not a, there's no software that we put in that says this is a light level, render it this way. This is really based on what we've seen past experience. And my next slide will kind of show some of those, you know, actual built in the field type of situations.
Thank you.
Yep. So Mike Mahoney is on the call here from Musco. So Mike, I don't know if you want to jump in and maybe you can, you know, get into more detail about the light spill and what these images actually represent in relationship to our project.
Sure. Thank you, Jeff. And for the record, Mike Mahoney with Musco Lighting. What probably the most, the single most important component to this is for everyone to be aware that LED sports lighting has not been immune to advances in manufacturing technology. So we're able to light facilities now that just five or six years ago, we could not light because we, nobody could control light as well as we can today with, with the advancements that LEDs provide us. And I think a great example of that is the top left photo where you see we have a light structure in directly in center field. Historically, you could never do that because that's right in the batter's eye as well as the umpire and the catcher. But because of our ability to cut slow off and make it very, to really minimize or actually eliminate the view of the light source from just a few feet away, that's allowing us to control light so much better than we had in the past. And I think all four of these depict really similar scenarios to what you could expect where you have a very sharp cutoff, no light being emitted from above the fixtures at the top of the pole. It's a very dark sky friendly approach. We have ball tracker fixtures lower on the poles. So we have lower wattage fixtures which allow for playability for players to track a high fly ball with a very targeted minimal amount of light as opposed to every one of the fixtures on a field emanating light above the horizon. So again, this is a very dark sky friendly approach. And we've been very successful in implementing this throughout, throughout the area. Probably most recently, and I'm not sure, and maybe somebody, maybe Ken can speak to this, but I know we've installed the poles at West Rock Middle School. I'm not sure if the power has been put to those yet. But and as well, Springwood Park tennis, it's the same technology there. So that, that's all I would have, all I would add at this point, Jeff.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. So, you know, a couple of key things is one, obviously, the, the center field thing is, is crucial for playability. But it also allows the light, you know, the, the number of light poles to be added to reduce the overall height. By being able to use that one in center field, it allows light poles to go, come down slightly from what they used to be. And, and what you may notice here is this is, you know, this would be the type of dugout or the, the size of approximate size of the structure with a pole meeting behind it. And you could see within 10 feet, the, you know, the light is, is almost completely cut off. The same could be said for here in this area as well. You can hardly see, you know, anything behind the, these elements as well. So a lot of effort has been put into organizing this so that we are as respectful as we possibly can be. Again, not including the foliage, the existing vegetation that's there. I, I know the vegetation that is specifically along this property line because I was the one who designed it about 10, 12 years ago, 15 years ago, maybe. So there is quite an evergreen screen that is right here. So any, you know, sort of broadcast spill would be caught by a slope and the vegetation that sits on top of it. But again, we, we can't really factor that into our, you know, calculations because we have to do it as a vertical cutoff.
Jeff, also, I just want to add that throughout all our fields, we have a shutdown system that all the lights turn off at 9:00 PM. So the same would apply to this field. So at 9:00 PM, the lights will come off automatically. So even though if the game is not finished, there is a system that Rexon Parks have that the lights goes off. Also, softball is usually played in the spring and in the summer. So most of the time, the lights actually will not be as much needed because we're gonna have still the sun up and then will be just for those extra few hours until 9:00 PM that the lights will be up.
Right. And to add to that, this, this system is remote operated. So Ken from Rexon Park would actually be able to monitor, no, there, there's no control system on site that anyone could access other than the, the city. And when the cutoff goes, the cutoff goes, Ken has complete control of that. So he would be well aware of, you know, any times when it needs to be off or it needs, needs to be on. And when that cutoff needs to be, he has a remote operation of all that.
Can I ask what the purpose of the, what of the variance was?
Currently, the, the, the city of Norwalk has a point three photometric light level along its property line. So you can exceed that number along the property line and we do. So we, we had to require, we had to request a variance for that one.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This is Ken, City of Norwalk Parks and Rec. I just wanted to make you aware also that the programming on this site is not going to change. It currently is a softball field and it's going to remain softball field. In the past, we also used to line this for a 50-yard football practice field. That's not being done anymore, but you can see the half field lines for, you know, girls' field hockey that they can use for practice. So the overall use of the field is not going to change.
I had two questions. Can you go back to your picture of the light limits?
This.
That's it. Yeah. And I, I wanted to know what the difference, what, what, what these numbers actually mean, the difference between the allowable limits and the limits that you're showing here. I mean, I know when it comes to sound that, you know, the decibel readings have a very specific meaning in terms of how quickly the, the sound doubles. What does it mean in terms of lighting?
I think Mike can give us a, an example of which candle light, what would that mean? Because it's not, that's a very good question, Mr. Chairman. So Mike, maybe if you can illustrate about what those numbers is related to, like some wattage will be great.
Sure. And building upon your, your initial comment, light is very similar to sound in that you can apply the, the inverse square law. So it dissipates at the square of the distance. So the further away from the light source, the less light you're gonna have. So while we're showing lighting levels that are above the current requirement at the exact property line, these, these levels do dissipate extremely quickly. And you can tell even by the fact that on the playing field itself, we're, you know, in around 30 foot candles in the outfield. And after just maybe 20 feet, we're down to three foot candles. So it, it is a, we like to call it a curtain of darkness around the, the field. Also, keep it in mind, we need to light the foul ball territory for softball to an appropriate level because foul ball territory is, you know, in play, if you will, so for safety of the players. But as far as the light levels, so parking lots, you know, typical parking lot, you're looking at an average of around five foot candles for a covered parking lot. These are, most of these readings are well below that. You're looking at twos and threes. A suburban open parking lot is around one foot candle. So it's kind of be between a covered parking lot and a, an open suburban parking lot. So really minimal light levels and you can even see where we, how quickly we dropped to 0.00 as we just get away from the field a little bit. But it's just, just behind the, the primary play areas where we're exceeding slightly the, the current.
And my, my second question, which is unrelated to that, is this being considered as a Title IX project?
It is not being considered, Mr. Chairman, but we have that concern because Jeff, if you can go back to the aerial view, I want to show them where is the baseball field is. Maybe we have it there. Maybe we need to, do you have that image? So we have a baseball field on site where that side is already lighted. And to be honest, probably the lighting that has been there, it has been there for many, many years. And of course, we're not going to be able to produce the same kind of darkness around the field as we are trying to achieve here on the turf field. But the, the idea behind is really to have the girls the same opportunity and playtime as the boys do.
Okay, thank you.
I would also add, our calculations don't take into account any of the, obviously, any of the existing streetlights along Highland Avenue, which I believe there are at least a couple. So I'd be pretty safe to assume that this lighting would be far less intrusive than any streetlights.
Can I ask one more question regarding the variance? Was the reason that your variance was granted because the areas that you were trying to protect were, were less lighted than under the old system? I, I'm trying to understand how you could exceed, but the, the city would grant a variance on it.
So the reason for the variance is that, as Jeff explained, we have to meet the threshold for zoning. And we, we could not at the property line. So we went for the variance. We, there were, we, we actually, I think that we went in front of that board twice. And we showed them exactly what we are showing to you, that although the numbers were higher, we truly believe that we were affecting the neighbors, even though we didn't get any of the public that also were notified to come and say that they were against the project. So they felt that the variance was valid. We were able to show that as soon as you step out of, of the property line, the numbers drop significantly to the point that was worth granting as the variance.
So basically, the new technology allows you to satisfy all of the requirements of the initial regulation while exceeding the light that they allowed. Is that, Mike, correct in that?
Well, it, it does, it doesn't let us meet that right at the property line, but a little bit beyond. Jeff, can you put again that?
I don't mean to beat this to that. I, I think.
I think this one you can see better. This, yeah, the other one where we show all the candle lights, go one back. Jeff, the one that we have also, you see the readings there. I think this is a, we have to do all the calculation. No, yeah. So you see what happened is that we have to meet that threshold, but as soon as you pass the property line, you see where it's same property line there. So that's where we are a little bit beyond. But if you go, if you read on the other line, you will see that within field feet, we're pretty much at the threshold that needs to be done.
Right. So specifically along here, we, before we even get to the other side of Highland Avenue, like I said, does have streetlights on it. Before we, in some, most locations, even in the midpoint, we're under the threshold. Now a point three threshold is, it is a very, very low level. It's not even a level we would recommend in a suburban parking lot. It's a, it's an extremely low level. Right here, see that some of the numbers are in the three range. But that again, does not take into any consideration the existing foliage or anything or the schedule when most of this stuff would occur, as Vanessa said, and Ken said, scheduling would be those times of year when, you know, clocks are ahead and we are already into daylight savings. And, you know, these games would be played, but we want to afford the same opportunity situations. It's a competitive or a tournament level that, that where it may need to be lit at certain times up to the 9:00 PM threshold.
So will the lights go off, like even if the game is on?
That's correct.
Happening, the lights will turn off?
Yes.
Yes, and everyone will be made well aware.
Yes. But this is a policy from Rexon Parks that we apply to all schools.
We actually do that now and coaches and teams are well aware that lights turn off at a certain time.
Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
I believe we finalize our presentation, right, Jeff?
Yeah. That was all we had. If there were any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll then open it up to the public. If you can close your screen. Brian, would you like to explain to the public how this works, please?
Sure. So any one from the public who'd like to speak, you can use the raise your hand feature, which is at the bottom of your screen. And then if you're dialed in on a phone, you could hit star nine and that will raise your hand. All right, James Worley, I'll bring you over.
I don't see anything.
You there, James?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I don't see anything. Are we not allowed on camera?
I can, I can bring you over, Louis, if you're fine with, with doing that, I can set that up. Okay. All right. Give me a second, James. I might kick you out for a second, but I'll bring you back in. All right, James, I think you're in. There you are.
Hi. I'm James Worley. I live across the street from here. I'm looking right at the stadium right now that you're proposing. And I don't believe that we've been given an opportunity to speak towards that variance that was granted. I don't believe that the rules that are put in place to protect people in this community from what you're doing have been observed. I went up on my street today and I went to 20 houses. You contacted a total of five people. And most of those people didn't get the correct information the first time. I met one person who got invited to that variance meeting. And when he got there, he wasn't given a chance to speak. It was to listen in only. I'm astounded that this can be happening to me in this community. I've lived here for 15 years. I've raised two daughters in this house. that this can be happening to me in this community. I've lived here for 15 years. I've raised two daughters in this house. I will try to become. One of the nicest things about living here is that the blend of this school, which is an institution of learning, and this side of the street, which is residential and a community of families, has always been put together and executed better than any other school that I've ever seen. And I have no idea who thought it was a good idea to throw that concept out the door in order so that you can put lights, 60 foot tall lighting poles across from my house. How is this happening? How is it that the rules that are supposed to protect us from this can simply be swept away when you feel like it? That's what I'd like to know. And this is not going to go away. I do not want this to be the end tonight. I contacted our councilman today. I contacted both Tom and I contacted Lisa. I'm going to get them involved. I'm going to get the mayor involved. I'm going to get everybody up and down the street involved. I'm going to do whatever it takes. This is outrageous that you would put a lighted stadium essentially on the front of this property. You have all that space inland inside the property where you can put lights and have these activities. I have no problem with supporting girls' access to better programs. I have two teenage girls myself. But it does not belong on the front of this road. I already have your light shining in every single night into my bedroom from the parking lot. You're telling me five 60 foot light towers are not going to shine in my window that I'm looking up right here? This is the sunlight on my face. You see that? How is it going to look when your pole is up there? And not only that, the poles that I can see over the roof of the school, right from here, from my desk, I can see those poles over the roof of the school on Casa Grande Field. And they are lower grade than these lights are. These lights are right up here. They're actually elevated about 10 feet above the street level. And the lights over at Casa Grande, which I can see over the school are the same height and they're built lower down. And you're telling me this isn't going to splash light? Point three, what does it mean? You've gone roughshod over it on every single part of that diagram. Astonishing. 2.78, that's the number on your graph. On my front door. What do the rules mean? Nothing. You can throw them out whenever you want. We weren't given adequate notice. We were not given a chance to speak. And the members of this community were kept in the dark as much as legally possible as you could. You sent registers letters to five houses here. This is going to affect everybody in this, in this street, everybody in this community. You sent letters to five houses in the hopes that you could get through this without anybody saying anything. You did so with the variance and now you're trying to do it with the whole schmear. That's not going to happen. What is the cost of this? I haven't heard a single thing about the cost of this. I did read in your plan that you figure $45,000. I find that laughable. Just for the turf? West Rocks cost $458,000 just for the turf. What about the light poles? How much is this going to cost? My kid hasn't been in school for a year. And we're putting money into this to put a stadium on Highland Avenue. On Highland Avenue. Not interior to the school, not in board to the property, not anywhere where it's appropriate. Where do you live? Does any one of you live on this street? Nobody. I'll let my wife talk. I really am not managing my emotions very well about this. So I'll let my wife talk if she wants.
As you can see, my husband feels very strongly about this. This is not usually his temperament, but we are very concerned about it being so close to the house, the size of the poles, all of this. And the original letter that we got had very few details and we feel like there was very little that's actually illuminated what the whole process was and how much was involved in this. And we are concerned about how it changes Highland Avenue and the community. I think that's it for me. And you?
Where is the school in this? Where is their representative? Is this all going to be just parks and rec? I'm finished for now.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you for your comments. Brian, anyone else who wishes to speak?
Sure, I will bring over Daniel DeFort.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Um. So I live at 285 A Highland Avenue. I can look out my living room window, my three-year-old's bedroom window, my five-year-old bedroom window. And I can see your field clear as day. There are five trees that are maybe 20 feet tall. There's no way that those lights are not shining into my children's bedrooms when I'm trying to put them to sleep at eight 30 at night. I can step out my back deck and see the fall off of the lights from the existing football field every night hitting the trees behind my house. Right? That field is lower grade than the field across the street from my house. You talk about these great new LED technology that says, oh, well, it really focuses the beam. Now, I implore you to go to any LED light in your house, turn it on and focus the beam and look at where it, it lies on the ground. Tilt your head up and look at the light fixture itself. It's still glaring directly into your eyeball. And that is going to be from four 60 foot towers housing how many LED lights each focusing on the field and still hitting my front house. The front of a three-year-old's bedroom, the front of a five-year-old's bedroom. Now, I am extremely skeptical because I was that individual who tried to go to those variance meetings and listen in, in here. The first document I received had a URL that sent me to Norwalk, California website. Not Norwalk, Connecticut. All right. Well, that's scary. You can't even get that right. The second piece of, the second notification that I got gave me the wrong time. So when I had to go and search for the video to watch what the, the, the decision on the variant was, I couldn't find it. I had to dig for an hour. I still couldn't find it. Now, you, this company, whoever set this up, provided that type of information to me. And then you want to spend how many millions of dollars across the street to put up lights that will basically shine into my children's room? You can't get a level of detail that correct on documentation as to where I'm supposed to be, when I'm supposed to be. How can I trust your numbers? How can we trust the science? Oh, that's right. Because you're not providing science. You're providing numbers that nobody can grasp. Okay? You're providing information that is so abstract that they had to have a second meeting on the variance, just to see how accurate it was. And everybody sitting here looking at it doesn't feel like it's accurate because who, who knows? And, and when you look at the numbers fall off, there's, there's a point across the street where it goes from point two to point zero or point four to point zero. Yeah, that's my house. My house is blocking the rest of it. Okay? Now, I may be angry, but I'm trying to bring you facts. Okay? This is ridiculous. There's no way that we can trust these numbers. And okay, so you say the fall off is going to stop by the end of the street. There's still a giant glowing orb across the street from my house. Okay? Have you ever seen those overhead camera shots of football stadiums? Right? Where everything around it is pitch black and the field is super bright? I'm going to be seeing that super bright part because there's going to be no walls. And everybody driving up and down the street is going to see that. All of my neighbors are going to see that. Probably the most fortunate people are the people across the street from me who are right against that wall of trees. They'll probably have the least issue. Everybody else is going to be affected by it. I implore you, don't do this because they obviously are hiding something. They tried to make it difficult to get people to see the variance information. And they're presenting you with numbers that are difficult to understand. All right. I don't trust this. There is no way I trust it. On another fact, you're improving that softball field. Okay? I can't tell you how many softballs I find in my driveway every summer. I, I haven't, ever since my boys were born, I haven't had to buy them a ball to play with because I get free softballs because they're hit over the fence. They're thrown over the fence. So now you're going to improve the field. You're going to increase the amount of people playing there. I, I, I mean, I even heard that it's not just going to be Norwalk. There are going to be other teams playing there. I mean, I don't think that's fair and I don't want the increased volume either right outside my doorstep. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, Ben Bolton.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Thank you. Well, my name is Ben Bolton. I live at 297 Highland Avenue with my wife Jenny Plath and we're diagonally across the street from this, from the softball field and we'd be directly affected by this proposal. I first heard about this plan in this meeting yesterday. So I scribbled down some tasty notes here. Bear with me, please. First of all, I just want to thank the board for your spirit of volunteerism and essential to government and democracy. And I, the timing is interesting because I just returned from Columbia, Maryland. I had been down, returned yesterday afternoon when I received this news and I had been down there to help my brother campaign for reelection for a volunteer position on a quasi governmental board. He's been, he's almost 80 years old. He's been serving his community for the last six years out of a love and out of a respect. And now here before the board, and I just want to say that sincerely, I appreciate the volunteerism. Now specifically tonight, what I'm asking is for continuation. And that's because my notes here, oh, okay, continuation. And that's because my neighbors and I haven't been notified, as you've heard. And so please give us an opportunity to formulate a response. You know, literally, we, we'd like to be kept in the dark, but figuratively, no. It just doesn't seem to square with the concept of democracy. Neighbors and board members need answers. You board members might, might have all the answers, but I have some questions. And I think these questions should be answered before there's any ruling. Number one, why weren't we notified? Are the proponents of this plan deliberately trying to keep people uninformed? Who's behind this plan? Who are the sponsors? Mr. Roberts, the signee, from what I understand, is moved to Florida. Who, who's sponsoring this? Why are the lights necessary? Why not just day games? What percentage of the players and the teams that will use the field will be from Norwalk? I see summer leagues and teams. It might be Trumbull versus Darien. It might be Wilton versus Stanford. So it seems like this is being framed as, oh, this will be the McMahon High School Girls softball field. But again, what percentage of the players and teams that will use that field will be from Norwalk? And so I assume that the, there will be a fee for using the field for the clubs, the summer camps, the clinics. Where does that money go? And so I guess essentially, is this essentially a revenue generating plan? A proposal, or is this actually a proposal meant to benefit Norwalk softball players? How much will it cost? $45,000? Was that a typo? That had to be a typo. And if it's not a typo, then how can anything else that the sponsors are putting out? Doesn't everything else lose credibility? Don't all the other claims lose credibility? $45,000 to tear up the field, put in turf, five 60 foot towers with state of the arts lights for $45,000? You answered some of the questions. I was concerned about whether the lights would be on an automatic timer. Well, first of all, how much money is already being spent? Where'd that money come from? It, it seems like if this is a revenue generating plan, then you're going to have to generate a lot of revenue just to break even on the construction cost. I mean, does the board have any numbers? Has anything been presented along these lines? And again, the big question, of course, is this a priority? This, is this needed? Anyway, I already mentioned that. Let's see. So what time would the lights go off? Okay. Well, they'd be on an automatic timer that would go off at nine o'clock, you say. Well, okay, then what happens five, 10 years from now? Well, okay, maybe it'll be nine 30 or maybe we'll change it. Oh, we've got a lot of kids want to play softball till 10:00. So maybe it's nine now, but what prevents it from changing in the future? And, you know, if the lights remain on after the designated time, what do neighbors do? Is there somebody we can call and go run over and turn off the lights? Again, based on the other claims and the secrecy, the parent secrecy, the components are, I mean, how can we trust, you know? Been such a good neighbor. Let me just, I'm sorry. Okay, that's the end of my questions right now, but I just want to, I won't take up too much more of your time. But I want to understand that I believe wholeheartedly in youth sports. Youth sports are essential. I started playing youth sports. I started playing organized football in my town in fourth grade and I continued right on through high school. I played lacrosse high school through college and sports were fun, were fundamental for me growing up. I've coached youth soccer teams. I've coached youth lacrosse teams, my son's teams. My stepdaughters have been involved in Norwalk youth. My stepdaughters have been involved in Norwalk youth lacrosse. We're so fortunate for youth sports. This is my this is. But the the thing is that Norwalk girls, not one Norwalk girl will be denied softball opportunities if this plan doesn't go through. Just a couple of things. Again, I I played sports all those years. I've never played sports under lights in my life. It turned out all right for me, you know, as I recall, a long time ago. But we practiced and we played our games in the day and at night did homework and relaxed and slept. Why do kids need to play sports after dark? They don't. Okay. And then finally, board members, please visit our neighborhood if you haven't recently. Drive down Highland Avenue. What you'll see are modest, well-maintained homes on a pleasant tree-lined street. The high school, of course, dominates the landscape, but still, there's a nice balance. Now, imagine driving down Highland Avenue 60 foot tall. I didn't hear anybody speaking 60 feet tall, five of them, towers with lights blazing. Can we agree that the neighborhoods be a lot prettier, a lot nicer without them? I'll stop now, but I just thank you for listening. Thanks for the consider your consideration and good night. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
All right, next, Robert Dubree.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. Is it possible to go back to that presentation? I just I'd really like to speak to that one slide that shows the rendering. So you can see my house on it as well. I'm 284 Highland Avenue. Our backyard essentially looks over a huge portion of that field. And we weren't notified of anything happening either. That's my understanding, and only the houses that are directly against the the field got some sort of notice. But I mean, a lot of other people in the neighborhood are definitely affected by this. So if I could speak to that, it would be a huge help.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
Just bear with me one second. I'm
That's okay, Jeff.
It seemed I apologize. It seemed to have stalled my apologies on that. Okay, let me share. If it will allow me. Okay. Is this the aerial you were referring to?
The one that sort of shows the nighttime example, if you could.
Oh, yep.
That's the one.
Yep. Sorry, it's
That's yeah, it's PDF loading. I got it. So my house is directly south through there. There's one house that's really close to the property. That's my neighbors. That's 286 Highland. I'm 284, which is the house just beneath that.
Down here?
Yeah, we have a clear eyeshot right to the field from almost any any room in the house. Also, we have a view to the back of the house, the fields that are below grade and downhill. And bring up what other people have brought up is, you know, you, the lights may be shining down onto the field. However, that that glowing orb is still up in the sky. So, you know, five of those 60 feet up there, that's going to be high visibility in every single person's bedroom. You know, you, other people have brought up vegetation and stuff like that, but you could see from this chart that none of the vegetation is the schools. All of the vegetation blocking is is the burden of the homeowners in the area. So the school is not going to be able, or you know, parks isn't going to, doesn't really seem to have a plan to add vegetation or the ability to add vegetation that would block some of that lighting. Now, I'm not even 100% certain. The neighbor north of me, just south of the field, is fully aware of the amount of light hitting his house. But I mean, according to the charts, you have it listed as close to somewhere in between an open and enclosed parking lot. And from this rendering, it looks nothing like that. So I mean, that's that area where you had it, I believe, at like five-foot candles or four-foot candles on the previous chart. That that's his bedroom window right there. So I don't know if the impact of the lighting is, you know, accurately being portrayed. To my understanding, this image right here is based off of Photoshop. It's not an actual scale. The other ones provide numbers, but they don't provide any any real render of of what the actual impact's going to be. So I don't know if anyone can speak to that or has an example of that. Some of the other numbers seemed a little different, too, where you had five in the area just just outside that that how the house to the south, someone that had a two or three. The numbers seem to jump around depending on which one you're looking at, although it's the same exact position, more or less. I don't know if it varies that much by a couple of feet, but the numbers seem to bounce all over the place. Now, other thing I'd like to add is I actually love the field. I have a four-year-old daughter. This was her first exposure to sports in her life was the field. When she was old enough to speak, one of the first things she loved doing was going to the field so she could watch the big kids play. So I I I'm all about preserving the integrity of the field and keeping sports a strong component in the community. I just don't think anyone here has an accurate understanding of what the lights are going to do and how it's going to affect the people in the houses all around this field. If possible, if you could go to any of the other examples that show fields with lighting draped around it, thank you so much. So all of those glowing orbs up in the sky, those are going to be right in our bedroom windows. The football field is, or I'm sorry, not the football field, the baseball field is about 200 feet behind our house and probably the whole everything stair steps. So it's probably 20 to 25 feet lower a grade than our house. And we have lights on in here all the time for me. It's not a, you know, an uncommon thing to have a room sort of lit up from the washout lighting from those fields. There's also been instances where those lights have been on literally all night long. So I understand time timer is going to be put in place and stuff like that, but they're not exactly working on the other fields around the school. So that's a concern of mine. Overall, there's just I have a laundry list of about 25 items that, you know, you add them up, you add that up with the variances, with the lack of understanding from people who live around this, a lack of knowledge from people living around this. And I'm just hoping we could show this to have a bigger discussion and to go over all of the actual impact on the people living here. The school carries almost none of the burden. It's a parking lot on the other end. And, you know, there's very little concern on that end, I'm sure. But even the the new field position puts my house, my neighbor's house, the people across the street, all of our houses now become the target for any errant ball. Where before it's, you know, everything's sort of contained as best possible by some some fencing. But now everything's pointing right at us. So I don't think the field position's even been taken into consideration with that. And after looking at other schools in Norwalk, this is going to be the only field where both lighting and the field position is facing outwards towards the community. There's nothing else like this in Norwalk where you have a field where all balls and everything struck is heading out towards the main road, towards people's homes, and anything that is pointed out away from the school and not in towards the school is usually, you know, limited by another field further out. So Rowan Middle School, for example, you're hitting into another field. Fox Run Elementary, if you're hitting into a field there, you have to clear an entire another field before it even gets remotely close to a road or a house. Everything else around us is always inward focused towards the school, so they carry the burden. And all of this is put on to the residents. We have the burden of putting up any landscaping and taking care of any landscaping to block the lighting. We have the burden of all the balls getting hit towards our direction, towards the roadways. And none of it makes sense. I mean, I just put a shut up on my house where I was lectured by zoning on like, you know, it has to be this far away for a setback. It can't be over 12 feet tall. I can't. All of these things added up from zoning, and now it's okay, a 60-foot light tower and, you know, tall fencing. None of it matching the 40-foot setbacks required by zoning normally. It it seems to just be shoveled in without any actual consideration. So I'm sort of begging and pleading here that we can have a better discussion on this and a stronger understanding of the impact rather than this just being thrown through with me having I have a day's a day and a half's notice on this, thankfully, just speaking with other neighbors to even understand what's going on here. So I implore you, please, like, let's let's talk about this a little further in another way. And that that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Jessica Lister.
Hi, my name's Morgan Lister. Jessica is my my wife. I just have a quick question. We're in 285, by the way, which is right across the street. Home home plate area. Quick question, will this be used for adult leagues in the Parks and Rec Department, or is it strictly for high school youth programs?
Morgan, they'll they'll answer your question once all the public is
All right, I wasn't sure. Thank you. And my other point is I feel like there's an opportunity to plant screening along the Highland Highland Avenue fence. There's there's really, I mean, there's there's some specimen trees there now, five of them maybe. But that offers zero screening, especially in the winter. I mean, I feel like there's probably some some opportunity to plant Leland Cypress or something that stays evergreen all year round and really kind of shield and buffer the activities going on, whether it's noise, light from the Highland Avenue and the neighbors. I am concerned a little bit about, you know, home run balls going going far, especially if there's adult leagues. I know it's probably not that big of a deal, but it does seem to be kind of a safety issue if that really is taking place. And if there is adult leagues, especially happening on the the weekends, I feel like that's probably an increase of traffic. So if there are adult leagues, like, has there been a traffic study done to see kind of what the impact on the traffic for Highland Avenue is going to be? So those are kind of my concerns. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
All right, next, Matthew Rideout.
Hi, thank you very much. If it's okay, could I get permission to have my camera turned on?
Sure, give me one second. It's going to kick you out and bring you back in.
Hi there. Can you hear and see me?
We can.
Perfect. So my name is Matthew Rideout. I live at 291 Highland Avenue. That's about 100 feet from the first speaker, James, and about 100 feet from the corner of the proposed field or the existing field. This is my son Lincoln. It's close to his bedtime. It's getting a little tired, a little cranky. And I don't know if you can see, that's the field out his bedroom window. So so that's, I mean, that's concerning in and of itself. Hopefully, you guys can all see that and how close that is. It's also concerning that I was never notified at all. It was it was James who notified me yesterday. Nothing at all. No initial proposal whenever this thing started. Nothing about tonight's meeting. It was a neighbor who was concerned for the street and concerned for me. And my local government is not at all concerned for me or my son Lincoln, who needs to go to sleep way, way before, you know, nine o'clock, and he can't have a light on blasting through this window when he's trying to sleep. So I just think it's ridiculous that no one even thought to notify us because we aren't directly adjacent to the property. But it's right there. We are directly adjacent to the property. So I just think that really the, you know, no due diligence has been done here to consult the neighborhood and without a yield.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, next, we have John Cross.
Good evening. How are you? John Cross Athletic Director of Brian McMahon High School. How are you? I've spoken a couple of times regarding this project. And I just want to speak again on behalf of all the girls in the city of Norwalk and how important it is for them. If you look around the city, you see beautiful baseball fields at both Brian McMahon High School and Nathan Hale. Both are lit. There's not a comparable site anywhere in the city of Norwalk. With that brings possibility of severe Title IX actions for the city down the road if girls do not have a lit baseball field, I'm sorry, softball field. It could be very easily OCR complaint, I should say, could be very easily filed, and that would cost the city a huge amount of money. So you need to think about those girls and getting equal opportunity. The softball fields are all dirt. They cannot go out and play like the boys can. It can rain and pour on a field, and in 15 minutes, the boys will be playing baseball. The girls will not be. We would have to wait until the next day or possibly over the entire weekend for the girls to get back on the field so they can be taken care of. It's a significant issue, and you really, really have to consider that when making your decisions. The girls in Norwalk need equal opportunities, just like the boys. Thank you.
And if there's anyone else from the public who'd like to speak, you could use the raise your hand feature now, or you can dial star nine if you're dialed in on a telephone. All right, Jenny Plath. Jenny, just have to unmute yourself if you're if you'd like to speak.
Oh, Lord. Okay, sorry about that. So Jenny Plath, 297 Highland Avenue, mom of two daughters, one of whom played field hockey, so I can appreciate the field hockey. I played softball. My question is not whether girls need access to equivalent fields. They do. I mean, we need to provide them equivalent fields. My question is that is this the right place in Norwalk, given all of our parks, given all of our baseball fields, softball fields? Is this the place that makes the most sense? There are baseball, softball fields in Flex Hill Park that are lovely. Different, not near a community in the same way. There's Veterans Park. I mean, I know you've looked at a lot of, probably considered a lot of places. I know if you're thinking, oh, girl's sports and you know, Brian McMahon, this is a natural location, but I know for our pool, for example, that's shared between the high schools. I know for just public accommodations in general, things where it's it. And while the other thing is the one thing I wanted to say is girls are playing the softball there now, and in the it's a spring sport. The they're not, they haven't even started playing yet their competitive games yet. They'll probably, I know it's COVID, but it I'm questioning whether nine o'clock makes sense. I'm also questioning whether this is seen as a revenue stream for the community versus really, the Title IX thing is kind of a gloss coating over it in a way because this is being led by Parks and Rec as opposed to being led by the school, but that might be my misunderstanding of the city government, and I don't want to get tied down with that. But the main thing is there has not been enough discussion on this. I think everybody we, everybody has spoken tonight chose to live and buy a home near a high school. That is a fact. We understand what it's like to be a good neighbor to a high school, and we would just like the high That is a fact. We understand what it's like to be a good neighbor to a high school and we would just like the high school to be a good neighbor. In return with us and we would like to, we don't want to get the city into any trouble legally. And we want our girls to have every opportunity they can. We just question the. Just because there's a field there now, that that makes that sense to be a lighted field. Those two things seem, nobody has complained in the community about there being a field now. We're living with that. That's fine. It's the lighted field. That's the problem. It's also, so let's regroup. We're begging you kind of to kind of let us meet with you and discuss and. And look at video of other communities and where they've put these lights in and what it looks like at night. Let's talk and. Brainstorm about other possible locations that could be co, maybe co-located for Norwalk High and McMahon. I think, again, there's no need to quash the idea completely. Of a lit field and there's no need to run into any legal trouble. It's just, let's please, please. Really seriously consider the, the setting of what you're asking to do. And. Until we've exhausted all other solutions, I think this clearly needs more discussion and. I really just ask you guys, you know, don't vote against doing this. Please just vote against, vote, vote for. Some meetings. Everybody on this call, I'm sure would love to meet cooperatively. And we did that, we've done that in the past with people about, you know. Buses, et cetera, and, and we just would appreciate your. Appreciate that. That's all I need to say. And thank you for considering and, you know, some kind of continuance and. Some sort of really truly active and cooperative community discussion that will make us proud. So to be here as opposed to really feel like somebody's kind of tried to shove something in our throats. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And if anyone else is, would like to speak on this application, you can use the raise your hand tool or dial star nine. I think that's it, Lou.
Okay, then let's turn it back to Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Chairman, it's Vanessa Vala, that is DPW engineering. And I just want to clarify that the notice was sent out, not only for the variance, but also for. The public hearing, we have to notify the department properties by a certain radius and that's what we did. Also, the certified mail notice was returned to PNZ. Also, I just want to remind the commissioners that there was a legal notice that was posted in the newspaper twice, one for the CBA and also twice for this meeting. So. What was kind of legally required for the notification to the residents? I just want to let you know that we did. I know that Ken will come after me just to address some of the programming, but also just want to. Emphasize, and I know that during the presentation, we, we didn't cover that, although we changed the field. Location that we mirror, we are adding netting around to avoid any balls to be spilled. Of the street and all that. Although we don't have any tree planting. In this design yet, I know Raxton Parks would be willing to add some tree if they feel that will be necessary to that. So I think that. In regards to cost, I believe the total cost of this project is also 1.2 million. Jeff, if I'm wrong on that, one, feel free to jump in. Also, I just want to let everybody know. That this project is, we didn't decide on it right away. This was already in the capital request and I believe in the past two or three years. So also when we do all the capital requests, Raxton Parks have to go through in front of a lot of. Commissions, committees and was also already there saying that we would turn that field into turf wave lighting. So it wasn't a surprise that we just decided yesterday to light that field. So there was a process where people could comment and actually there was a lot of support. From the community to have that turf lighted and that was one of the reasons why that project ended up getting funded because of the. Co. Balance between the boys and girls sports. I think this kind of will address some of the concerns that, that we heard. And I'm going to now pass to Ken so he can address some of the programming questions as well.
Vanessa, thank you. Just bear with me. I was taking notes as a speaker. So I'll just go down the list and hopefully I hit everything. First of all, as Vanessa stated, we've been discussing this project for probably two and a half years now. The first year we went for capital funding for the design of the field. And then once we had the design, then the following year leading up to this point, we went for the capital funding for construction. So as Vanessa said, a lot of work and a lot of thought went into this. It wasn't something that we came up with overnight. And we attended dozens of, well, probably about dozen meetings on this topic. Someone was asking about the orientation of the field. With home plate being close to the school and the batter shooting the balls out toward a road. That's very similar to Nathan Hale. If you remember, we just did a turf complex with lights over at Nathan Hale. And we have the home plate area of the baseball field. Next to the school building and the outfield balls are, are hit towards William Street. We do have 10 foot fencing out in the outfield and we haven't had any issues with. You know, balls in homeowners yards or you're not going to, we're not hitting anybody either.
Again, yes, Nathan, Nathan Hale, is that used by the boys or the girls?
Nathan Hale is used by boys baseball, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls lacrosse.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Being that, you know, we are on Nathan Hale, you guys, some of you guys do remember, we went through quite a process to have the lights approved over at Nathan Hale. And the Nathan Hale complex actually butts William Street, Maurice Street, Jenny James and Linkcrest. And there was a lot of concern with the neighbors on the lighting. I think we went through two or three. Different public hearing meetings. And as you probably aware, maybe you aren't, but we haven't had any complaints once the field was installed. And people see how the fields are used and how the lighting looks. But there was a, a surge of. Opponents on the field that we did have to go through to get this process and we kind of gave the same presentations that we're giving today. And the neighbors there, like I said, I don't think I've had one complaint about the lights at Nathan Hale. So there are no outside teams that play on our fields. These basically go for all of our fields. The only time we have two outside teams playing each other would be in a tournament situation. So if Norwalk High wanted to hold a tournament, you might have the chance of a Wilton playing the Darien. But we're not in the business of leasing out our fields to outside agencies. We actually don't have enough field space for our own Norwalk groups. So that would be counterproductive. So this is definitely not a moneymaker for Parks and Rec. And the reason why Parks and Rec is taking the lead on this application with the assistance of DPW. Is because school properties are considered park properties. So outside the building falls under our jurisdiction, which is why, you know, we take the lead on these projects, but we do have full support from the school. As you heard from the AD, John Cross and at the several. Capital project meetings, we had probably a hundred people speaking for, for this field. There are no adult leagues that are going to play there. The field's not sized for adult softball. So there aren't going to be any adult leagues. I already covered, it's not a revenue stream, why it's led by Parks and Rec. I believe those were the major issues. If there was something I didn't address that you guys wanted me to answer. Please just kind of hop in, but I was just kind of going through my notes on what was mentioned. And I think that's, I think that's all I had.
Okay, is that it? Is that the end of the presentation?
It is, Mr. Chairman, unless if you have any further questions for us.
Commission members, any questions?
Jeff, if you don't mind, this is Mike from Moscow. I just had a couple of quick comments to follow up on some of the comments. The. The comments, I think there are a couple mentioning glowing orbs. That's a direct. Remembrance, if you will, of previous technology. And all of the pictures that we depicted show current technology. So really. When you talk about a glowing orb, it's really like a Commodore 64 versus Nikon. We're, we're, we're talking about completely different, much more advanced technology. We wouldn't be able to put a pole, a light source directly. In the behind home plate or excuse me, in front of home plate, directly in center field. Directly in line with the catcher, the umpire, the batter, in that batter's eye. If it was in fact a quote glowing orb. So, you know, you're just going to have to please drive around to some of the other facilities I've mentioned in town that, that have this technology. Take a look at it. It's much different. Certainly understand that, you know, that's. Quite that battle all the time, that legacy lighting is, I mean, it was bad, believe me. We've let Darien High School recently, it took us over 20 years of dealing with. Zoning regulations and neighbor. Opposition because we couldn't meet what their requirements were. Once we. Went full bore into LED, we were able to light Darien High School. And those lights have been on for, I think, three or four years and not one single phone call, any adjoining. Or any neighborhood, neighboring property, any. So. I just. Would like everyone, please just open your minds to the new technology. It is much better. The, the technology, the lighting that you're referencing on campus currently is not what's being proposed on the, the new field. So. It's just. I know it's a stretch to, because it's not what you're used to seeing, but. Just do your homework, open your minds and, and take a look around. Certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, speaking of Nathan Hale, those were actually the old style lights also. And as I said prior, we haven't had any complaints on the old technology. So this is, this is a step up. And also. Parks and Rec would be 100% willing to add additional screen if needed. We will work with Jeff, our designer. You know, to put some additional screening as room allows.
Thank you. It seems pretty clear to me that. I obviously can't speak for. The, what was, what was granted on the lighting. But it seems clear to me that. The. The Parks and Rec Department. Met the requirements for notification to neighbors. The question is. In, in my view, whether that notification is, is adequate frankly. And I've, I've asked Steve to add that as one of the issues we'll bring up as we're rewriting. The zoning regulations. But it, it, it does appear that the notification requirements were met. Nonetheless, I'm wondering if we shouldn't continue this hearing. To our next meeting, which I believe is the 21st. To give other community members an opportunity to speak. Now, those who. Spoke tonight, as is our practice, would not be permitted to speak, to speak a second time unless there's new information. But. They, they certainly will be contacting, I suspect. Their other neighbors. And I would like to give those other neighbors an opportunity to speak. I'd also like to hear formally. Either from the Board of Education or from the school itself in the person of the principal. I'd like to see what. They have to say about this project. So I throw that out to you. Want to see if, if that's a suggestion that has legs or if you prefer to move in a different direction.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to say that if this didn't get continued to another meeting, I was going to vote no. I think that I absolutely agree with what you said about the deficiencies in the notice requirements that we have. And I'm not blaming the DPW or the Parks and Recs, but it is, leaves a lot to be desired in these types of situations. And I'm also thinking to myself, the. Last person who spoke, you know, talked about. How in the past they've had meetings with representatives of the school and I've also heard several. Different people on the other side of this application say. How good Nathan Hale is and that there's never been a complaint. So I'm thinking to myself, maybe. Parks and Recs or DPWs in control of the light switch can invite. The neighbors on Highland Avenue over to Nathan Hale and see what it looks like. Because they don't believe it and frankly, I don't believe it. But maybe it's true.
Richard, you may remember when we held our hearing on. The work that was taking place at West Rocks. There was a man, this was the, the, the new field. There was a gentleman who spoke at great length. Some criticized me for letting him speak at too great a length. About his concerns about Nathan Hale. I mean, I think what happens is once a project is completed. Even if people are unhappy with it, I think there's a sense that there's not much that can be done about it. So I'm not sure. That Parks and Rec is, is getting all the feedback. And no.
Maybe they are, but they seem.
Why I don't blame them for that. I think it's simply human nature.
Maybe they're not, but they seem to think that that's an example of how it should work. And, you know, I don't see where it's a, it's a big push to invite. The people at Highland Avenue to come, you know, as each day goes by, sundown is later and later, but. To come and see what the lights look like. I'm surrounded in my house by two very benevolent operations, but I don't need any lights in my house at night. So I get it.
Feedback from other members of the commission?
I agree with continuing it. I mean, I, I personally would be interested in having, knowing where this new LED technology is actually installed because. From what I understand, they're saying it's not a Nathan Hale. It is a Darien High School perhaps, but I mean, I'm not going to go over to Darien High School and look at their field. But I would like to know where we can actually. Go and see and, you know, when they're talking about these orbs, I would like to go and. And see what the, whether there are orbs or not. I know Casa Grande definitely has orbs. And so I'd like to get a sense of what this technology is actually like before we vote on this.
Yeah, I agree with the notion here too about continuing it for no other reason than. Just getting that extra, you know, bit of verification from the high school, doing as much as we can to. Work with the neighbors, but at the same time, there are valid competing interests here. And I think all of us. You know, think that, you know, girls should have equal and fair opportunity to play sports at night. So we should be able to thread the needle on this one. Even though I realize that it's entirely possible that people will, some people won't be, you know, happy at the end of it, but. I think we should do as much as we can and I support everyone's notion of continuing the hearing.
Okay.
Continuing the hearing as well.
Okay, Frank?
Yes, can continue. I think, you know, just, just, just give the other neighbors who did not get an opportunity because maybe they did not hear about this. Just a chance to voice their opinion, I think will go a long way and, and I hope. That the presentation is right. Cause I think it really is a, is a great idea. And if we could make sure that the lights do just attract to that field and. And, and not impede. And if we could make sure that the lights do just attract to that field and, and not impede into the neighbors' houses as, as the fair. I, you know, I think that's our role here.
Okay.
I guess my, my question, and I don't know, Steve, if you can help weigh in on this one, is considering a number of the comments was about inadequate notification, and I'm not assuming that DPW did anything wrong here. I actually think they did comply with the notice provisions, but I think that when it comes to lights, you know, more than just simply the budding properties as per the regulations may be affected by it. So I'm wondering if there are some alternative communication strategies we can use so that people feel that they have been adequately notified, you know, to the fullest extent possible. I realize that Ms. Valadara said that, you know, they've been notified in the newspaper and certified mail, and I, there's nothing wrong with that. In fact, I think things are everything right. Just my question is, are there some better communication strategies we can use to try and alleviate this issue?
As the chairman indicated, I think the only way to address that at this juncture is to modify the regulation to look at the distance from the affected property to do that. Otherwise, I mean, if they're only required to notify the butters, and that's been the practice forever, basically, then, you know, there's nothing that DPW did wrong in this instance.
Not at all. Yeah.
Then can I have a motion to continue? Josh, Josh is making the motion and Frank is seconding. Let's do a roll call.
Sure, I'll start with Mr. Witherspoon.
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Mancini?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes. Did you get Mr. Rowena?
I did, I think.
Oh, okay. Okay. Can we get this on the agenda for the twenty-first?
Yeah, that, up until now, that looked like a pretty light agenda, but now I'm thinking back your sleeping bags.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Good night. All right, so we've taken on the public hearing. Let's move on to the next item, five dash fifteen SP. Special Properties, I believe that's two, LLC, The White Barn, LLC Able Construction, four forty Newtown Avenue slash seventy-eight Cranberry Road. You may remember this was the site of the White Barn Theater. The owners had given a nonprofit the opportunity to raise money in order to save the facility. Time has apparently run out on that, and the developer, I believe, wants to move forward. I see Attorney Suchi here. I assume you're going to make the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the zoning commission. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm an attorney with Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy, and I represent the new owners of the property, White Barn LLC and Able Construction. The property had been owned by Special Properties Two, which secured approvals in twenty fifteen for a fifteen-unit conservation development on the property. There was litigation commenced in connection with approvals. That litigation was concluded. And over the past few years, Special Properties tried to work out an arrangement with the Norwalk Land Trust for it to purchase the property. Unfortunately, those efforts were unsuccessful. Late December, early January, Special Properties Two conveyed the property to White Barn LLC, and it is in the process of moving forward with the fifteen-unit conservation development. We requested an extension of time because it was coming close to the expiration date of the time within which Special Properties or the new owner would need to secure zoning and building permits. So we filed the request for extension of time in a timely fashion, and I can report to you tonight that White Barn LLC and Able Construction on Tuesday submitted plans and an application for zoning approval and compliance for the fifteen-unit conservation development. Once that permit is issued, then the next step would be for them to secure a building permit. So this was just a precautionary measure to be prudent and protect the underlying approvals prior to any expiration.
Okay. Questions, comments from the commission members? If not, can I have a motion to authorize a one-year extension?
I'll move.
So Rod, Rod has moved. Is there a second? Okay, Frank, Frank has seconded, and you have in front of you a draft resolution. Any questions on the resolution or any other questions for the developer? All right, if not, let's vote on the extension. Think we can, if I can change my view, I think we can do this with a show of hands. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your hand, please. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. And Attorney Suchi, may we ask where you are?
Thank you for your time. That photo is of the, the town of Vernazza on the Ligurian Sea in the region of Cinque Terre in Italy.
It's lovely. Okay, next item.
Next.
Oh, nine dash eighteen SBR slash number eighteen dash Cam, Rick Sono, see, formerly Play Connecticut LLC, eighty-five ninety-nine Water Street. You may remember, we approved this. This was the venue that, among other things, was going to have axe throwing. And we had indicated that should they wish to change the interior of the venue and the activities taking place, that they would come back to us. And I presume that is why Attorney Suchi has not signed off.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy, and I represent the property owner District Sono LLC. I won't go into all the details since you have a lengthy agenda, but certainly this was approved in January of twenty nineteen as an entertainment venue under Play LLC to occupy about thirty thousand square feet with various entertainment opportunities. Thereafter, last summer, you received a modification request on behalf of the property owner District Sono LLC to modify the interior programmatic components, and some of those interior changes were to provide axe throwing, a golf simulator, interior brewery, and some interior restaurant space, among others. In recent months, it's come to my client and its tenants' attention that there are some better opportunities available, and we would like to modify those interior programmatic components. The brewery, axe-throwing, golf simulator, and interior restaurant space would be removed. And generally, in its place, there would be a squash club for squash matches and squash instruction, as well as a gym space called Ninja Gym, mostly, and that would be the only interior space. We believe this is a viable and appropriate use of the space. It not only will attract individuals from the area, but also provide recreational opportunities for many of the residents in South Norwalk, and including those who are new to South Norwalk and going to be populating the structures at Day Street, on Water Street, and all the other projects that are coming before you, one of which is on your agenda this evening. On the call tonight is John Greenspan. He is representative of District Sono LLC. If you have any questions for John. But one thing I did want to mention is the parking lot that was proposed on Day Street will be created. As a matter of fact, construction has begun to create, to create the site and to get that parking lot underway, and it'll be fully compliant with all the DPW requirements. And the other thing that would be removed is the food truck that was proposed on the Northern Street, on Elizabeth Street. That will not be part of this project any longer, so there won't be any issues with parking on that side of the street or impacts or use of city rightway. For me or Mr. Greenspan, we're happy to answer them.
Question? Right, not, this is an petition to alter the interior of the building to accommodate uses other than those originally approved. If there are no questions, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Richard has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Lou. Frank will second.
Oh, okay, sorry, Frank. Thank you. Frank has seconded, and we have up on the screen the draft approval. I guess I have one question for Attorney Suchi, and that is, is there anything else that you're required to do before you can move this forward? Do you have to go before SEAC again, or before any other boards or commissions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully you can hear me. I thought I might have.
We can.
Okay, we have received sign-offs from SNU, the Fire Department, Harbor Management, redevelopment, and we've received comments today from Water Pollution Control Authority and Public Works. Those comments are under review, and if changes to the plans are necessary, we will certainly implement those changes, incorporate them into revised drawings, and then resubmit those to all agencies and make them part of the packet that goes to planning and zoning for the issuance of the zoning permit. But other than that, those are the only remaining two entities from whom we need to seek approvals.
Okay. Brian, is nine the last item on this?
No, there's two more.
All right, let's, let's see those other two.
And I believe the redevelopment agency has opined on eleven eleven, so I think that's, they're, they're fine with the, the no changes. And then the last one is ten, which is really why they were in front of you last time.
Right. Should we have another one indicating that if there are any other changes required that we would leave it to the staff to review those?
Would you like to modify number three?
No, as I read it, I guess it's adequate.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Then unless there are questions from any of the commission members, let's, let's do a roll call, vote on this.
Sure. Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Before I say yes, I just want to say this motion is made in honor of our former chairman. Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
With regret that Galen and I won't get to go to axe throwing. Yes.
Mr. Mancini?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
Okay, that's your names.
Okay. All right, let's move on. We're at items under number five. A twenty twenty-one dash oh nine SP, Spinnaker Real Estate Partners LLC, Coastal Lofts LLC, eight-ten eighteen Monroe Street, and two and four Chestnut Street, seventy-five and seventy-seven South Main Street. Proposed multi, multi-billing mixed, mixed-use project. And who is representing Spinnaker this evening?
Good evening, Chairman. Matt Everton with Spinnaker Real Estate Partners, and we have a full design team here that I'm happy to introduce.
Okay.
So yeah, I'll give a brief overview and introduction to the design team. They'll present the vision. I'll give you a couple of kind of housekeeping items. But Colin from Beinfield Architecture will be doing most of the presentation. I think, believe Bruce Beinfield is also in attendance. Eric from Eric Green's Landscape Architecture. Vincent, this is a mean need, the stuff like air. Mike from Hardisty and Hanover, the traffic engineer, actually isn't with us this evening, but the traffic report has been submitted. I believe there's some communication going back and forth, and he'll be available at subsequent meetings in the public hearing. And then Joe Finele of Coastal Development, one of the joint venture partners on this application, as well as Henry and myself from Spinnaker. So the property is referenced as ten Monroe Street. Colin, I'm not sure if you want to kind of pull up that presentation.
Yeah, Brian, can you give me a screen share? If I don't
You should be able to, Colin.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could briefly interrupt, I have to recuse myself from this. I'm not sure if I have to in this initial presentation, but I probably should.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, so we kind of went through this as I introduced everyone. Actually, the majority of these firms are all located within a short walk within South Norwalk of this project.
Matthew, can you enlarge that at all? That is, that is much better.
Great, no problem. Yeah, so this, the property is within the South Norwalk, Sono Station Design District with frontage, as you see, on Chestnut, Monroe, and South Main. It's actually across Monroe Street from the police station, as you see, and across Chestnut Street from a project that this commission previously approved, and is currently under construction at one Chestnut Street. The subject property is actually seven parcels, five separate property owners. And although we refer to it as ten Monroe Street, it's actually eight, ten, and eighteen Monroe Street, two and four Chestnut, and seventy-five and seventy-seven South Main Street. And it comprises about one point four nine acres of land area. And as I mentioned, we're, you know, a joint venture of Spinnaker and Coastal are under contract to acquire these properties. And kind of the next step of that due diligence is presented to you tonight and pursuing land use approvals for this proposed development. So Colin and the design team will get into it a little bit further, but the plan calls for the preservation of two prominent buildings, including the historic structure at eighteen Monroe Street, which is the corner of Chestnut and Monroe. And eight Monroe is a corner of South Main and Monroe. Plus, the ground-up construction of a new mixed-use structure kind of tucked behind, set back from Monroe Street and tucked behind those two buildings. In total, amongst those three buildings, there'll be about, there'll be a hundred and fifty rental apartment units, including the ten percent that will be workforce housing, and approximately fifteen thousand square feet of commercial space on, at the first floor level, as well as some office spaces on the upper level of the eighteen Monroe Street building. Active uses at the ground level, as I said, and the parking, we'll go through the site plan, but the parking is hidden behind the active uses. Won't be visible from, from any, any public street. We do have a generous public realm that we'll, we'll dive into, and the uses that we're proposing, the mix of them are, are principal uses. However, this is a special permit application. There is one section of the Sono Station Design District that was recently amended a few years ago, maybe less than a few years ago, that basically, in order to encourage the preservation of historic structures, certain requirements can be exceeded. And we're actually exceeding both floor area ratio and residential density. And because we're kind of preserving those two historic structures, we're asking this commission's approval to exceed those two items, which I think was contemplated when the regulation was put in place. So notices, because it's a special permit, notices were sent, I believe, for those certified return receipts to Brian earlier today or yesterday to all the butters. And once this gets to public hearing, once a public hearing scheduled, we'll do the same thing, send a separate notice out, and also post the, the public notice as required. And so I think with that, I'll be around for questions, but I'll turn it over to Colin to get into some of the important stuff.
All right, thanks, Matt. Can everybody hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, and just really quick, was everybody able to see my little pointer highlight?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Commissioners. Great to see you all again, and looking forward to telling you more about the, the project. As Matt said, the key metrics are a hundred and fifty units, with about fifteen thousand square feet of commercial existing and, and new space. And there's, the main feature is approximately an eight thousand square foot focal point courtyard. The rendering, which you saw an earlier version, it was more of a massing model probably that hit the press, but this is a more refined version, starting to speak to the vision. The main bookends, as it were, are the conservation of the two existing structures, the historic Central Hotel at Chestnut and Monroe that's planned to be cleaned up and renovated. It's one of six It's one of six that was in existence around the turn of the century between the train station and Washington Street. And it's the last freestanding hotel from that group in the area. The merchant tile building at eight Monroe on the corner of South Main is seen as being maintained to allow the businesses that are currently located to continue to be located there and to continue to do business. I believe a lot of them are longstanding or have been in business for a while and are probably looking to forward to the return of business as we come out of this pandemic. So the, the sense is that the, the facade would be cleaned up and renovated. I believe Matt's planning on a future signage package, cleaning up the awnings and potentially new storefronts that was detailed in what some of the documents that were submitted to the, to the commission. One of the, the key elements, as I said, is this, this courtyard that integrates with the public space on the, on the sidewalk. And that's seen as a, as a destination as well as being a destination of the in-between. So this project seeks to fill in one of the missing gaps in between the train station and the Washington Street District. So we're hoping that this is going to be a, a period of relief close to the train station where people that are going to and from can patronize a cafe or a restaurant that may be adjacent to the, to the plaza. This pull-through is seen as a, is a, is a multi-function space. The Dutch word for that is, is wooner, shared space or a shared street, but in this case, just a plaza. It would be very similar to the Ironworks Courtyard where it could be closed for events and more pedestrian access, but would allow the space to be used during the daytime and during the off-hours when most plazas aren't busy, residents would be able to hail their Uber, their Lyft and deliveries would be able to come and go and it would lend some vibrancy to this, to this place so that it doesn't end up being an unused space during the day and there will be some activity with comings and goings. And that's one of the things that is fascinating about urban life and the ability to just wonder what's going on and have these things happening. And it keeps it safe feeling and inviting for pedestrians that are passing, so it doesn't feel like the current chain link fence and dark courtyard or dark parking lot that's there currently when you're walking by at night on your way to the train. The facade facing the courtyard is being seen as speaking to the industrial heritage of South Norwalk with Corten steel beams, sculptural canopy that comes out of the building, large glass openings with what read as large steel windows and then patinaed Corten cladding on the flanking buildings. And we're hoping that we can, Matt and the team can get some operators that will allow some frontage for activity on the, the flanking sides of the courtyard there. We've got a streetscape view that's a little bit more descriptive of what's going on there. This is as if you were seeing it from the police station. Eric Rains could answer more specifically about the landscape, but generally some large planted trees lining the plaza and creating some definition of the, the shared zone where the vehicles are allowed to enter the space, the courtyard or the canopy can be driven under. And then there's a lush green screen that's seen as maturing over time and providing a buffer and some privacy for the, the entrance in the, the main lobby of the, the residences there. The concept is that it's a high-end boutique hotel-like residential lobbies, so it would have a very hip and cool feel. Some of the hotels in Lower Manhattan are the inspiration for that. And we really think that that's going to be a fantastic space with mixed materials and textures and plantings that are appropriate and really revitalize this almost pocket park-like piece of the project. This is a plan view of the detail of the courtyard where the cars, the deliveries and, and Uber drop-off would be able to come in off of Monroe Street so that they don't interfere with traffic operations. They could pick up people underneath the canopy. There's a waiting area that's covered from weather by the building overhang closest to the, to there, so that's seen as kind of a outdoor lounge area. And they're able to pull out and exit or they can enter the parking garage that Matt noted before. This is at the moment seen as the entry to the, the parking and you'd be able to pull in there as well. When this gets closed off, you'd be able to enter off of Monroe Street and still access the garage. Over here, adjacent to the eighteen Monroe and the, the old Central Hotel, you can see kind of a, a planted area with some, some buffer shrubs and, and trees that would be in the, the dark green area. The light green area would be kind of a turf area bordered by a hardscape for pedestrian passage around the perimeter of the plaza and give some hardscape underneath the, the dining. There would also be some cafe tables out in the, in the turf, similar to, to Ironworks. And basically that's mirrored on the other side of the plaza over here. Another look at the building plan at that level. The parking garage is seen as concealed completely behind liner buildings, so the Chestnut Street facade is seen as playing off of the existing building that is under construction at one Chestnut Street and the hope is that we'd get adjacencies and encourage activity in between the two structures. And that, I believe Matt can speak more to it, but I understand the concept is that there may be some shared amenities between the buildings. So having a synergistic relationship between the two properties would, is seen as beneficial to the neighborhood and creating activity and transit between the two properties. The hotel building on the corner is seen as being renovated and brought back into compliance with current building codes and providing some commercial space and mixed tenancy there. The existing number eight Monroe is being maintained and just cleaned up and, and renovated to some extent, but mostly just facade improvements since the existing businesses are going to stay in existence. Some additional commercial space on South Main Street to continue the frontage down there. And those are seen as a, a modern abstraction of traditional storefronts like we see on Washington Street that use the characteristic modular brick in, in those masses. So kind of a, a quad of, of shop fronts marching down the, the street and continuing the, the commercial district down South Main Street.
Moving up a level. Colin, I'll, I'll interrupt. If you want to go back to that. Yep. One, one slide there. So in, in our initial kind of conversations with zoning staff, since we've submitted this application and I think they've run it by some other city departments, they've expressed a desire to relocate this, this entry into the garage so that it's not off of South, not, not off of Monroe Street. So we are exploring some alternatives off of South Main so that kind of more of that courtyard, public realm area could be exclusively for pedestrians and recapture some of the driveway space. So we're working on that and the next, hopefully the next meeting, we can present some options on that.
Yeah, so then continuing up a level, this is still concealed from the, the, the public facing streets by the double height space and the liner buildings and it's a mezzanine level parking, providing doubling the capacity of the garage. You can see that there's additional space on the second floor of the, the hotel building. There's a contemplation of providing a roof terrace for the tenants there. And that's basically it for this level, just parking in a little bit more commercial space. Moving up a level to the courtyard, what, what I'll call the courtyard level, as is typical in these types of buildings that wrap around a courtyard, there's a, a pool with some amenities provided in there, some landscaping, some private terraces, internal space that's going to consist of just bathrooms and shower facilities for the pool as well as a, a small lounge area and some other program that's not completely determined yet. Typical mix of apartments, one, two bedrooms, studios. I believe we've got a couple of three bedrooms on this project and then additional commercial space on the third level of the existing hotel building. Continues again with the typical level there. This is the fourth level where zoning dictates that we step the building back to reduce the massing along the streets. I, the, the step back is ten feet and these units are provided with generous exterior terraces at the fourth level and they will unlikely, or they will undoubtedly have good territorial city views as well as on the eastern facade, likely water views as well towards the Norwalk Harbor. The level above is the same, just without the, the terraces. Looking at the elevations, this is just a, a further description and a, a, a flat representation unlike the rendering of the, the elevations. These large glass and steel window openings with the Corten steel beams on the facade in the central element, the canopy is about mid-height and that allows the, the passage of the vehicles underneath. The flanking elements are seen as the patinaed Corten, which is a steel plate that weathers to kind of a dark orange. Looks very interesting and has a, has a, almost a living character to it. So as the time progresses, the building, the, the patina will, will age and, and the look will change a little bit. The upper portion of the building, much like one chestnut, is seen as fiber cement lap siding. And then we've got some flat fiber cement panel in the, in the recesses that break up the massing of the buildings and, and provide for some, some individual balconies on those units. The, that's the courtyard elevation is seen as being fiber cement with some units getting private balconies. Those are southern exposure and a, a green screen that allows some natural air to get into the garage is that this portion of the building is held back from the property line. This is the quad of store, distilled storefronts that I mentioned, so kind of a modern interpretation of a traditional storefront with the large shop front opening and transom in the middle, a recess and an alcove along the street that provides differentiation between the, the building masses and allows for balconies. And that just continues and provides some rhythm to the street and the continuation of the, the commercial district. The upper portion, again, the, the fiber cement lap siding. This is the portion of the building that plays off of the one chestnut, so the bottom seen as double height space, kind of continuing the vocabulary of the, the central building element in the courtyard with some, some Corten beams and those large windows and then a floating volume above that that somewhat mimics some of what's going on at, at the one chestnut building in style. But these two street spaces are seen as communicating together and kind of being activated internally and during the, throughout the day. And just some pictures of the existing buildings and they'd be cleaned up and windows replaced, the appurtenances that are falling apart would be removed and brought up to, to code as needed and new awnings, new shop fronts and really taken care of so that it can suit the, the, the needs of the future in this neighborhood.
Colin, we're going to.
Yes, Mr. Schollman.
Well, obviously we're going to need to go over this all again.
Yes.
Public hearing, so.
I'm about done, so if you have.
That's fine, go ahead then.
Yeah, and so this is just the, the number eight Monroe Building and mostly just cleaning up the canopy is a future signage package. And as part of, I believe, the entire project, the sidewalks are going to be improved in the district as they surround the, the block. And then you can see we're planning on leaving the option open for a, a future tenant in this space to, or the existing tenant to open up to the, to the plaza as needed. So that's, that's really the conclusion of my part of the presentation and we can take questions. We do have the other consultants here. And, and I do have their drawings available, should we need to reference them. And go back to the rendering so that we can look at something nice. Or hopefully.
I have a question actually for Steve. Have we brought in a peer reviewer on this?
Yes, we, we've already spoken with DeCarlo and Doll and had some preliminary conversation, so that, that's just the only outstanding question is when they can get their review done to schedule the public hearing. Ideally, we'd like to try to do that in one night and move it forward. It's a possibility we could do it our first meeting in May. If it's, that's too tight, then we could, we'd schedule it for the second meeting in May and then I, you know, look to conclude it that evening.
Okay, I think that makes, that makes sense. Obviously, if, as a result of this back and forth between DeCarlo and Doll and the developer, there are changes. It would be very nice to have the sheets on those changes available to us a week or so before, before we do go to public hearing. Are there questions from other commission members? If not, had you completed your presentation or is there more you want to show us?
I believe this was just a high-level overview, so if you don't have any specific questions, we, we don't need to go into further detail.
Okay.
As, as Matt said and as Steve said, we are working with the city actively and they're, they're reviewers. So I'm looking forward to working with Bob again. I've worked with them on a few projects in the district. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing what he has to say and, and moving through the process.
Okay, at, at the appropriate time, we'd also like to see the location of those ten percent affordable units as, as well.
Yeah, we do have the, the fifteen units. Those were detailed in the package that was submitted. So that's, that's laid out on one of the, one of the sheets for you.
I apologize, I must have missed.
No, no problem. It's, there's some of the smaller plans, but they are, we did our best to disperse them equally throughout the building and across the various unit classes.
Good. Okay, any, any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. And Commissioners. And city staff.
All right, our next item, twenty twenty-one dash ten dash SP, Norwalk Housing Ventures Two LLC, One Elmcrest Terrace, Proposed Historic Preservation Development to Rehabilitate Existing Historic Building and Construct a Six-Unit Residential Edition. All right, we're in a similar situation here. This is a presentation prior to a public hearing. So I'll just remind you that we don't need one hundred percent of the detail on this project in the presentation. And we, we still have a good many items we need to discuss in our agenda. So please, go, go ahead. You may start your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy. And we represent the applicant Norwalk Housing Ventures LLC, which proposes to construct to an existing historic structure at property at One Elmcrest Terrace, an addition consisting of six additional units to that structure. The, the property is just over an acre in size. There are three structures on it today. One is called the Victorian and that's the stately house that fronts on Elmcrest Terrace. And that, it was constructed around eighteen eighty. It's on the city's historic registry. And there's information in your packet that we won't go through tonight, but we'll certainly go through it in more detail at the hearing about the ownership and individuals who lived in that, that structure and what their connection and history is in the city of Norwalk. That structure will have one unit removed as well as the exterior fire escapes that mar the front of that beautiful home. So that's the, the change to that, that structure. There is also a building called the Barracks, which are the two-story low, more angular building, buildings. They were constructed nineteen fifty-eight. They have sixteen one-bedroom apartments. That building will remain unchanged. The cottage is tucked away in between these two, kind of in the back of the property. It was constructed in the late eighteen hundreds as well. It's around sixty. It's around sixty-seven hundred square feet and currently there are two one-bedroom units in that building. We're proposing, as I said, six additional units to the cottage. Uh, and with the removal of one unit from the Victorian, there will be a total of thirty-five units on the site. Thirty-one bedroom and five studios. Uh, for some of you, uh, you probably will will remember that uh Norwalk Housing Ventures and its affiliate workforce partners. Uh presented to you and received your approval back in the fall uh of a development at two oh four Flax Hill Road. And that incorporated the uh renovation uh of an an existing historic structure there as well, so. Workforce Housing and Norwalk Housing Ventures are uh very much attentive to historic renovation. And the addition of additional uh housing stock in the city of Norwalk that will address a need between. Uh, low-income housing, affordable and that that netherland in between, that is of course a segment of the population that is underserved as well. Um, if we could, if uh on the the call tonight is Kevin Moses of Norwalk Housing Ventures. Mark Hopper of Crosskey Architects, and he was also the architect of the two oh four Flax Hill Road projects. Project and um Chris DeAngelis of Cavesus DeAngelis, the project engineer. So if possible, uh, if we could ask Chris to screen share just the site plan, so you can see where the different buildings are and get the your orientation. And then after that, I'll have Mark uh. Screen share his um renovate his elevation for the addition to the cottage. You can see what we're talking about in a little more detail. Uh, while Chris is getting ready to screen share, I will let you know that all budding property owners and those across the street were notified of the submission of this application on March twenty-third by certificate of mailing and the certificate should be in your file. And to date, we have received um sign-offs from the fire department. Uh, earlier today, we received comments from Public Works and WPCA and those are under review. The first taxing district water department has received the application, but has not been able to review it as yet, but we will be following up with them to see if there are any comments or concerns they may have. And we received comments and responded to those comments. Uh, from Mike Yosak of Transportation Mobility and Parking, and I believe his follow-up email should be in the file. With his um agreement with respect to the comments and responses we provided to him. So at this point, Chris, if you could just quickly walk the commissioners through what the site is, where the buildings are, um and then we'll hand it over to Mark. Uh, for him to show the elevations and renderings.
Sure, uh, then, uh, thank you very much. Uh, for the record, my name is Chris. DeAngelis, professional engineer with Cavesus DeAngelis. Um, so what you have in front of you is the uh. The site plan, um. Very simply, there are um the the uh. The new construction occurs to the uh the small, what we call the cottage uh in the center, um north uh central part of the site. Um, there's an existing addition that wraps around the back of it so that the front look of the cottage. Um, can be preserved from our um from the from the uh vantage point of the street and also as people drive into the driveway. Uh, there are two long existing uh apartment-style buildings uh along Calcrest. And then, of course, in the uh in the corner um is the uh the historic home. Uh, and there are uh generally just um some uh improvements around the perimeter of that, which Mark will uh discuss, so. Uh, the the main addition, the new building area, uh, takes up a small area, the existing parking lot. Uh, there's no new impervious area. Some of the parking spaces that are there today will just set up underneath the new building. Um, it's a very simple uh site plan, very small impact area, much less than half an acre. Um, and I I think that's generally a probably what you're more interested in hearing about is the uh. The architectural drawings that uh that Mark can can share with you.
Uh, at this time, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, if Mark Hopper could come on and screen share his plan. And while he is doing that, I just also wanted to advise you that the Norwalk Historical Commission. Reviewed the proposal at its March twenty-fourth meeting, I believe, and recommend its recommendation was approval. And there, uh, I believe, a letter and minutes of that meeting were sent to Mr. Baker. If they were not, we will certainly follow up. But um Kevin Moses of Workforce Partners and Norwalk Housing Ventures attended that meeting and certainly can confirm that action by the uh Historical Commission.
Hey Liz, um, for the record, my name is Mark Hopper. I'm a principal with Crosskey Architects. Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman and zoning commissioner members. As uh Liz pointed out, this is our third project in front of the zoning commission that's utilizing the. Historic preservation incentives, you know, outlaw outlined in section one eighteen three sixty of the de-residence zone. Again, to go over uh quickly, the project consists of work on um two buildings on site. Uh, as Liz and both Chris mentioned, the Victorious, the Victorian House, um. What we have here is a side-by-side comparison of existing on the left and proposed on the right. We highlighted in red. The areas of existing um wood exterior fire escapes that we are going going to remove from the house. Um, fortunately, a lot of the um character-defining uh details on the house are intact. They just happen to be covered by those uh that those wood um. Um, emergency egress stairs. To facilitate this uh removal, the building is going to be fully sprinkled and um all of the uh. Bedroom units um have complying uh egress windows, so um as indicated on on the and the drawings, the uh. Fire escape on the front of the building, uh, two areas are going to be removed. Uh, the fire escape at the rear of the building is going to remain intact, uh as you'll see by our our um. Fire from our renderings, the um the view of the the fire escapes of the rear um is really obscured by landscaping and and the configuration a lot uh of the building. Looking at the elevations again, a side-by-side, the proposed street elevation along um one Elmcrest, you can see the. And as you're well aware, the um, there's a pretty extensive um, you know, wood fire escape that covers the front of the building, again, highlighted in red on the left. Um, I think you can really get a true sense of what happens in the in the view that you get back of the building. Once that is removed, so I think the the owner i- is taking great care in um. I- i- in um restoring and caring for these historic structures. And certainly applaud them for the move and and using the uh historic in- incentives that the zoning code allows. Um, quickly jumping to the cottage building. Existing cottages on two floors, um, I mean, essentially a square building. There's a single unit on the first floor, a single unit on the second floor. Um, as was mentioned, the addition is uh um really kind of an L-shaped, uh, there's in a. In the addition there on the first floor, there's a one-bedroom unit which is handicap accessible. The building does uh sit up above uh existing parking as Chris outlined. So there is some covered parking, but it's open carport-like on three sides. Uh, second floor, there's again three additional uh one-bedroom units served by an exterior stair. And then on the third floor, there's two additional one-bedroom units, again, served by um an existing um or a news new exterior stair. From an elevation standpoint, um, the south elevation in the lower right-hand corner is the view of the e- existing building. Cottage building as you enter the site by vehicle. Um, what we looked at being uh, look at the massing of the of the new addition. Uh, to be very compatible with the existing cottage building. Uh, and not not overwhelm it, certainly these elevations. Um, in flat elevation, don't do, don't do justice of the of the care and massing um and detailing. Mimic him mimicking of detailing so that uh the new addition could um. Um, honor the existing building. Uh, to the east elevation, you see the uh stepping up. Um, in in mass and form as the building rises on the uh increased slope of the site. So you have the existing two-story structure and then we go from two stories to three stories, essentially two stories above that covered parking. Uh, north elevation shows the um covered parking below with uh two levels of uh dwelling units above. Um, and then the west elevation again shows the shows the stepping up. And at the uh lower level, this is the entrance to the um handicap-accessible entrance. But also the entrance into the s- exterior stair that's covered, that um connects to the multi uh second and third floor of the uh of the addition. From a design standpoint, the uh the detailing of the uh addition, you know, pays homage to the existing existing building. We carried similar roof slopes. We carried the looked at the detailing of the pointed arch at the uh um projected um rakes on the building and the gable ends. So you see that uh uh detail show up in the existing building. We also provided um shallow Juliet-type balconies. That uh a- allows for sliding glass doors to maximize natural light and ventilation into each of the rooms. But also provides some architectural detailing and texture to the outside of the building. Which is in keeping and reminiscent of the uh the scale and detailing of um the existing carriage house. The uh, the new building will have uh four exterior light fixtures. Um, their uh wall packs. This drawing is a photometric drawing that shows that outline and the the lighting pattern of each of the uh. Types of fixtures. Uh, each fixture has a different type of um of photometric patterning in it. And uh you can see by this study that we comply with um zero light leak at the at the property line. Um, these uh next couple shy slides do show the colorations of the exterior of the building. We also have materials board that will get into more detail when we have a public hearing. And then finally, just w- would like to uh um show um what the building, the Victorian will look like with the uh with the fire escapes removed. The view from uh um from Elmcrest and uh improved plantings and access around. Again, uh plantings will uh certainly hide a- any notion of that uh some of the remaining um uh fire escape on the back of the building. And then finally, a view of uh um the addition onto the uh existing cottage building. Uh, so with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back to uh Liz and would be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we will have at the next meeting and certainly at the public hearing. Uh, Tess Schwartz, she's with Tassera Engineering. She's our traffic engineer. And we can certainly and will go into more detail on the engineering side, the architectural floor plans and anything else that you desire. As well as history of the structure and the architectural components and compatibility. We are seeking relief under one eighteen three sixty B two Y in connection with residential density, uh parking backup aisle dimension. Um, reduction in recreation area, building coverage very slight and um parking. So that, at this stage, concludes presentation unless you have questions for us who would like us to go into greater detail.
Um, the front of that property has a concrete wall and it's badly in need of repair. Um, is uh the owner considering um repairing that wall as part of the uh work to be done? I didn't hear anything about it. And I didn't see anything in the paperwork.
Now, let me see if I can get an answer, but Mark, by any chance, do you have any information on repair to the wall?
Um, Liz, it's Kevin Moses. How are you?
Thanks, Kevin.
Nope, no problem. And good evening, Commission, and thank you for the question, Mr. Scholman. Um, so that wall in question, um, we've actually had plans to improve that wall for some time, but because this project was in play. Um, we had thought to piggyback that on the project, however, uh to date, we've not included that intent on the plans. Um, so if you'd like us to include a little bit of information about how we plan to improve that wall. Uh, moving forward, we could make note of that.
I think that would be helpful. Um. Uh, because it it frankly detracts from uh from the property.
Um. And and I will say that we have repaired the wall. Um. In the past, and if you drive by Connecticut Avenue, you could see a few of those repairs, but. Um, we also had it, uh, one of the things I'm alluding to is removing the caps from the top of that wall, which is one of the big blemishes that's there.
Hmm.
Um, so we we can provide some more information at the at the public hearing.
Okay. Uh, questions from the other commissioner?
Mr. Scholman, excuse me for interrupting. One other thing I neglected to mention is uh Todd Bryant, one of our historical experts, is also on the line. And provided much of the background, if not all of the background information on uh with respect to the structures and their residence and their history, so. In case you have any questions for Todd, he is also on the line.
I'd be afraid to ask Todd any questions. We we wouldn't get out of here this evening. Um, uh, uh, actually, I do have one question. That is, uh, we recently approved uh improvements on a um. Uh, building on East Wall Street. Um, where they are returning it entirely, uh, at least on the exterior, uh, to its um. Uh, original condition, including uh the uh the colors that are being used uh in in repainting it. And I'm just wondering just just how far are you going beyond removing the um. Uh, out, 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 uh, outdoor stairways. Um, in in terms of restoring it to uh uh its uh original uh condition. At least on the exterior.
Mark, could you respond to that, please? You did it to some extent in the papers that are are moving papers, but if you could respond a little more, that would be helpful.
Sure, um, certainly, it, there will be repairs that were are made to the exterior once the uh um wood. Uh, fire escapes are removed, but beyond that, we really haven't gotten into uh uh any discussions of or at all to other improvements on the on the exterior. Uh, on the exterior of the building. So, you know, that could be something that we could, you know, certainly contemplate in discussions with uh with workforce partners and and the owner of the project. Um, you know, fortunately, a uh, as I mentioned before, you know, high majority of the um character-defining detail. It has remained intact. Certainly, the coloration of the building as it exists today is all of the uh. Um, trim details are painted white. The siding is a is a very light gray. And from our standpoint, we think that helps to accentuate all of the details on the building so that you've got some slight differentiation between. Um, you know, the field of the siding and um and the architectural details of, you know, columns and brackets and uh. Um, window uh window trims, um, you know, things along that line. So we think that there's a, you know, a a good juxtaposition of the of the colorations that highlights those those uh features.
And Mr. Scholman, if I might add one other thing, um, the Historic Commission, when we presented to them and we presented to them at at great length and detail, they were. Quite happy with the approach that we've taken to date on that building and. Just the removal of those fire escapes alone is is actually going to um reveal that building once more on the public street frontage.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, questions from uh other members of the commission? Uh, if not.
Lou, I just wanted, you guys do have discretion to to require peer review if it's it's a it's subject to you to what you guys think of the project.
Again, comments from the uh other members to the commission?
I I don't really think it's necessary for this project. It looks like a um. The addition to the cottage is the main feature and it looks pretty um sympathetic to to the design.
Yeah, I I think I would I would second that as well. I would second what Rod just said.
Uh, Frank, since I have you on the screen, I just want to point out, since we spoke earlier, it's eight thirty.
I just sent you a uh email. I didn't want to interrupt everyone, so on that, thank you for understanding. Good night and good luck.
Okay, good night. Uh, comments from any other commission members? I mean, I tend to agree with Rod uh that uh we don't need to put this to uh peer review. Um. So the question is, um. Uh, when do we schedule it for public hearing? Uh, it sounds as if you still have work to do before you're prepared to come before us again. Um.
Yeah, so we could tentatively, if you wanted to do the the first May meeting, um, at least for now. And then uh depending on if the applicant's able to get in the remaining information, um, if that works for them.
Okay.
That would, that would be fine for us. I think we will be in very good shape uh within the next two weeks, maybe two and a half. To respond to the con- the outstanding comments from the SEAC agencies from whom we received comments today. I think that's that's perfectly. I think that's that's perfectly doable.
Okay, then we'll do that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Next item on the agenda, 2021-11 CAM Shorefront Park Properties LLC, 72 Shorefront Park. Construction of new single family residence. Are you representing them as well?
Sorry, once again, you have to listen to me. So I promise to be brief. And I represent Shorefront Park Properties LLC, which is the owner of 72 Shorefront Park. It's a vacant piece of property on shorefront. That butts the Norwalk Harbor. It's just over point two acres in size. And as I said, it's vacant. My client proposes to construct a new single family dwelling meets all the requirements of zoning. And is completely FEMA compliant with all with finished floor plus any below floor components, duct work and all the light being at or above the minimum flood elevation, which in this this property is 11.0. So all members will be at 12.2, thereby fully compliant. The application was submitted on March 18th. We notified all abutting property owners and those directly across the street by certified mail, by by, excuse me, certificate of mailing. And those should be in your file as well. On the line tonight is Tom Quinn, who is the project engineer, engineer of Peak Engineering. Also is Kate Throck Morton of Environmental Land Solutions, who proposed, who prepared the coastal report. And my client might be on, but he did have a conflict, so he may not be able to join us this evening. And at this point, I think I'll just turn it over to Tom very quickly to show you, oh, excuse me, and Dennis Peters, excuse me, project architect. And you'll hear from Dennis briefly as well. So if Tom could screen here his site plan, we'll just walk you through it very quickly, followed by Kate, who can describe to you the coastal resources and policies. And then we'll wrap it up with Dennis to describe to you his architectural plan and concept for the project.
Hi, my name's Tom Quinn, and as Liz said, I'm with Peak Engineers and I am a licensed professional engineer registered in State Connecticut. You should all be able to see my screen at this point.
We can.
Just a brief overview of the property. So this is the parcel. And Shorefront Park is to the west. The tidal waters of Norwalk Harbor are to the east. This heavy line here is the sea wall. The top of the sea wall is about elevation eight. The coastal jurisdiction is 5.4, so we are above that. And the Neen High Water Line is elevation 3.3 in this area. The elevation of the property is roughly almost 10, 9.8, 10, you can see here and so forth. So as Liz said, this project proposes to construct a single family residence. And again, the FEMA flood elevation is 11. There is some VE zone, VE zone located on this property. That's this line right here. And the elevation is 14. We're proposing no structures in that VE zone. We are proposing a patio, as you will see, but the patio is being constructed at grade. So there's no proposed increase in elevation in the VE zone. Shifting to, this is the erosion control plan that we was submitted. This has typical details and notes, as well as some details and notes regarding the drainage facilities we're proposing. You should have that in your package. And then also, we have the gradient and drainage plan. And then also some drainage sketches, which I'll get to. So as I said, this project proposes to construct a residence on a lot which is currently vacant. The proposed improvements will result therefore in an increase in impervious area, in this case, almost approximately 3,400 square feet. This project is located along Long Island Sound, as I mentioned. Therefore, per the drainage manual, we're not required to provide the zero increase in runoff for the peak storm or the zero increase in volume. But we are encouraged to provide water quality structures and address first flush conditions coming from our sites and pervase areas. So we propose to meet those requirements of the manual. Through the use of best management practices to protect the resource and and the surrounding properties. In this condition, as we've discussed in the harbor commission meeting. What we're looking at here is, in my opinion, is two resources, really, as I mentioned, of course, we've got the title flats here to the east. And in Shorefront Park, there is a couple of catch basins. So we need to protect the water entering entering those catch basins, because of course, that'll directly be conveyed directly into the title flat. So I look at the protection of this site in both the east and west directions. What we propose to do is, again, the plan proposes to minimize the impacts of the roof water and the driveway water and the rear patio. By utilizing three facilities, which will employ the best management practices to collect and treat stormwater and to convey the water. So that it can recharge the sub soils. I'd like to go back a step and just mention that we did do deep soil testing and perk testing. Right here, we did some deeps and perks, and then this area did another deep. And in these two areas and also in the adjoining lot. We what we found was medium to coarse sand and gravels all the way down to a depth of six feet. The percolation rate was high, so we do know we have good permeability and this area is therefore good for infiltration practices. So switching over to sketch B, this is a diagram quickly of the way the water is going to be flowing on this property. These arrows would be the roof. This line here is a demarcation of ridge line of the building. I'm going to switch to a colored version of that real quickly and just try to describe these practices. So the the pre the practice of pre-treatment of the water, we're going to perform in two manners here. What we do, we want to do best manager practice again is to pre-treat the water before it goes into our infiltrators. So on the west side of the building, which is this brown area, where we'll be catching the roof water in this downspout, this downspout, and this one. It'll all be connected to this catch basin that we propose. The catch basin, of course, will have the deep sump, and it's also going to have a T-trap to prevent the floatables from going into this first infiltration unit. That's infiltration system number one. So this has been all sized for the water quality volume coming off of those impervious areas. Similarly, for the east side, we've got this green area. This is all be cut collecting roof drains. It's going to go into a sediment trap here, which is going to have the same functionality as the catch basin in that it's going to have a two foot sump. With a hood and that water will go into this, these set of units galleries right here. So that's how we're providing the pre-treatment before enters the galleries. So the underground galleries will promote groundwater recharge. As I said, they'll also provide the water quality volume from the contributing pervase areas. So lastly, the last item we need to protect or capture, I should say, is this rear patio, which will be an impervious patio. And it will be flowing in the direction of these red area arrows. So the sea wall is constructed with the top of the walls pretty much right at existing grade. So if we don't do something, that water, of course, will go right into the sound. So what we're proposing is a shallow infiltration trench, just only about a foot deep of stone. The stone will be exposed all along this area. And what that that'll do is it'll capture that water coming off the lawn area and off that impervious patio. And again, that infiltration trench has been sized for the water quality volume. So those are the three methods of best manager and practice we're employing for this project to meet the stormwater. I should say the drainage manual of the city of Norwalk 2017. The calculations for those three infiltration errors are in the report that's been submitted. Just the development plan also includes general notes and details for erosion controls, as I had mentioned previously. And this plan here will do a construction entrance. We've got silk fence wrapping around the perimeter of the this the site here. So just in conclusion, what I'm saying here is that the proposed development meets the city Norwalk Drainage Manual's latest edition for facilities. And it meets the following criteria specifically. The best management practice will pre-treat collected stormwater. It will recharge the underlying soils by introducing the collected water from the roof and the driveway to the high infiltration capacity sub soils. The plan of construction includes sedimentation erosion controls. The proposed grading results in a zero, excuse me, results in positive drainage away from the building and does not alter the pre-activity drainage pattern. So that's how we are meeting the drainage manual. I would like to just state that earlier today, I'm not sure if Liz mentioned that earlier today, I think around 12:31 o'clock, we received DPW's comments. Some of the comments were, we normally, we we see on our normal basis and we address those prior to building permit. But we have no problem addressing each and every one of those comments prior to whenever it's decided to address those. We will revise our plans and revise reports as necessary and submit those for additional comment to the DPW. So with that, I think I'll wrap it up, Liz.
If there are any questions for Tom? If not, Kate, would you mind just walking the commission through the coastal resources and policies? And while Kate is getting ready to do that, I will let you know that the harbor management commission reviewed the proposal. And issued a positive recommendation at its March 24th meeting. I think a letter was submitted today from Dr. Pinto of the harbor management commission. Southland Electric and Water sign off was submitted on April 5th. WPCA sign off was submitted on April 7th. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Kate Throck Morton, landscape architect with Environmental Land Solutions. Tom, could you please go back to the survey, the base survey? Which just highlights certainly the existing conditions. I think Tom had mentioned that I'll go over the onsite resources, which for this site include tidal wetlands to the east side of the property. And are very well defined by the sea wall, the heavy line that runs north, south and are kind of J's around that southwest corner of the property. And as Tom mentioned, that there are two coastal hazard zones on this property. There is a VE zone that overlaps just the perimeter of the site. And further in, the AE zone overlaps the remainder of the property. The offsite resources adjacent to this property include inner tidal flats, shorelands. And she and seafish concentrations within the harbor, but they are they are closed and not open for recreational use. We believe that this plan that's been prepared was consistent with the coastal use policies of Norwalk. Because this is an existing site within an existing residential neighborhood. This site is essentially a lawn. There will be no disturbance of tidal vegetation. There is one single tree on the property, which is a beach, which will be removed for the house development. The site will connect to existing sewer and water lines within the street. The building will be raised above coastal hazard elevations as required. There will be, again, no work in the tidal wetlands. All the work will be confined to the existing developed lawn area. And Tom had has reviewed extensive stormwater best mission practices that will prevent impact. And direct runoff into the tidal wetlands, and we believe those actions will be adequate to preserve the adjoining coastal resources. Thank you.
Anyone has any questions of Kate? Okay, hearing none. Dennis, it's it's your show now.
About now, we good? About now, we good?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. And I'm sorry, I'm having trouble sharing my screen here. Bear with me one second. Everybody see that?
No.
No.
Okay, technologically challenged. Bear with me. Here we go. About now.
Yeah, you can see it.
Okay. Go to first floor. Obviously, you know, we worked diligently to create, and actually in a fun way, some sort of a unique footprint, if you will, given the property dynamics. So I think we've come up with something that I'm sorry, let me move my video here. We've come up with a footprint that satisfies obviously all the building setbacks required by the city of Norwalk. And we've also established the first floor flood elevation. And I'm sorry, for the record, Dennis Peters, on behalf of the applicant. I did the design work for the home. So as I stated, we worked diligently to create a footprint that confirms, obviously, to the building setback requirements, the city of Norwalk. And we've also obviously placed the house above the flood elevation. First floor is proposed at elevation 12.2. All the mechanicals and associated duct work are also above the flood elevation to satisfy the obvious requirement for that. And the design also incorporates all the necessary flood venting to facilitate facilitate stormwater removal, if you will, during an extreme flood event. And all the downspouts have obviously been incorporated with Tom's plan to demonstrate, you know, the proper roof runoff and so forth. The first floor as shown is approximately 1,530 square feet. Second floor as shown here is approximately 15, 2100 square feet. And then there is a third floor with an outdoor deck, which incorporates an additional approximate thousand square feet of living space. So again, not to be short and brief, but I know the hour is getting late. So if there's any questions with regards to the design, I'm certainly happy to address them. But I think it's pretty straightforward as far as the project goes.
Just, I think I know the answer. Excuse me, but just for clarification. The zoning requirement here is for two and a half stories. You're going to three. I presume that's because that third floor is not going to be a full third story.
That's correct. The calculations have been done to demonstrate the allowable percentage of living space on that third floor.
Okay, thank you.
And that's demonstrated, I'm sorry, it's on this on this PDF, but it was it was calculated. I'm sorry, it is here. It's here on the on the third floor plan. Calculations there.
Okay.
Anyone has?
A lot of house on a very small plot of land. I've I've visited. There's a brand new house right next to it. There's one of Shorefront Park's parks next on the other side. It's a very tight space.
We did our best to to get what we needed into into somewhat of a unique footprint, but I think we were pretty successful.
Surprisingly, this lot is larger than the 6250 required for B residence zone. It's over 10,000. But yeah, it's the houses is a substantial house, but it's on a fully compliant. I would ask the commission, in years past, your practice has been to not hold public hearings on single family residential CAM applications, although it is within your discretion. I've heard nothing from neighbors who have been notified of the submission of this application. And I would ask that you give the same consideration and not determine that a public hearing is not necessary for this CAM application as well.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the other commission members. I I I'm of the opinion that we can give the CAM approval this evening, but if you feel otherwise, please, I'd like to hear from you.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
I have no idea what you're doing.
Yeah, no public hearings needed.
Okay. Okay. Brian, can you throw up the proposed resolution?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Okay, Josh moves approval. Is there a second? I'm sorry, Richard, was that you?
Either me or Michael.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, if not, let's call the question. Steve, let's let's call on the individual members.
Certainly, Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, that was unanimous.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. Good night. Good night.
Thank you.
I think.
She's not funny, this is the Liz Sutchie agenda.
So sorry.
But the next item is our own, and that is the 2021-12R Proposed Text Amendment to Article 101 Workforce Housing Regulations of the Building Zone Regulations. This is our preliminary review, preliminary to, if we agree to scheduling a public hearing on this matter.
Oh, so just to clarify one, we've already, we've got the public hearing is scheduled for your first May meeting.
Okay.
This will be your briefest presentation tonight, so take note applicants in the future. This is where we're shooting for expeditious, expeditious time here. I want to just highlight one thing that was modified from the last time you saw this that went out and I've had some conversations with some different folks in the community, the one item I think which will probably get a lot of conversation when you do hold a public hearing is the applicability to the three to nine unit developments. That it was initially proposed to be at 60% state median income, and I put that at 80 for purposes of the public hearing. Obviously, if you feel strongly, we can change that when we get to the hearing. In addition, we do plan on providing some examples from some recent projects of the cost of construction and how this would actually play out in real dollars, because I don't think it's going to be substantial. But the idea being that a lot of these will accumulate a decent amount of funds, which could help like the housing authority or another affordable, affordable housing developer with their soft costs and engineering costs and so forth for projects that they're putting together. And we did get, we have sent out all the referrals. We'll be at the planning commission with the text amendment next weeks to hopefully get their approval as well. So I just wanted to update you on that and take any questions you might have.
Only question I have is obviously, I mean, I think this is a really good idea. I think it's going to go, you know, it should go to a public hearing, which started scheduled anyway. But my question would be, how is the public getting notified?
So with this, it's legal notice only, you know, we don't, we, and put all the information is up on our website. We're not required to notify the entire city of Norwalk that this is something going on. There, there'll be articles in the paper, there already probably, I think there already has been one, one, one generated a little bit of confusion. I think some people think that the workforce housing regulation is brand new. It's not, it's a regulation that's been on the books for a long time. And the tweets that are proposed are, as we discussed, and I think you agreed, were, you know, more, I would say, housekeeping and minor in nature verse anything that was different than what's currently on the books.
Commission members have any further comments on this? All right, if not, then Steve will go forward with the public hearing.
Okay.
The, the rest of the items are of some concern. The first is the update on traffic issues at 467 Connecticut Avenue Chick-fil-A. And that is why Attorney Sutchie is hanging in. Attorney Sutchie?
Mr. Chairman, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. And for the record, again, Liz Sutchie of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy. We have a variety of people on the line with us this evening. Some are from Chick-fil-A corporate, but we also have on the line Ethan Shikowski is a professional engineer with Atlantic Traffic and Design and Dan Peterson as well. Just to take a step back, we first appeared before you in February in response to concerns and complaints raised with respect to queuing at the Chick-fil-A facility at 267 Connecticut Avenue. At that time, you shared a variety of questions, concerns and requests of us to evaluate and come back to you with information and possibly solutions to the queuing issues that have been existing largely in large measure due to COVID. So what has happened over the past six to eight weeks? Chick-fil-A retained the services of, excuse me, Atlantic Traffic and Design. Ethan will get into further detail as to what they did, but generally speaking, Atlantic evaluated the site, reviewed the 2016 analysis and study that was submitted for this project by Langin Engineering, evaluated the roadway system, reviewed the accesses, reviewed the queuing situation, reviewed operations of Chick-fil-A, undertook traffic counts on March 5th from 11:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night. That was a Friday and March 6th from 11:00 in the morning to 3:00. That was Saturday during the lunch, lunch peak. Atlantic then crafted a plan to modify the site, which along with some operational improvements, we expect will improve the flow, improve the queuing and result in a more efficient operation of the site and hopefully address the concerns and the issues that have been raised. In connection with what Ethan will describe to you, we hope that the commission, if it deems appropriate, will permit Chick-fil-A to proceed with the site changes that will be discussed with you this evening. And upon submission of plans and an application to the zoning department. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Ethan and he can describe to you what his, what he did in connection with your questions and concerns. And I also neglected to mention Troy Nixon is also on the call along with Natalie Knowles and Chad Baker. And I don't think Archer Bullock is on, but that's generally the, the folks who are with us this evening. So Ethan?
Hi. Thanks, Liz. For the record, my name is Ethan Shikowski. I'm with Atlantic Traffic and Design Engineering. We're at 2929 Express Drive North, Hop Dog, New York. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, and I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer. Our office prepared a letter dated April 1st, 2021, which I believe was submitted to the board. Actually, I'm going to start with sharing my screen. If that's acceptable. Can everyone see my screen here with the aerial? Yep. So our report took a look at the existing site conditions for the Chick-fil-A Norwalk on Connecticut Avenue at Rampart Road. We evaluated the existing conditions and traffic queuing onsite as Liz described on a, you know, peak Friday lunch and dinner rush and then the Saturday lunchtime peak as well. After we evaluated the site, we also came up with a, you know, recommended interim solution to try to mitigate for some of these queuing concerns, including onsite, you know, minor adjustments onsite to help with operations as well as total queuing capacity for the vehicles onsite. You know, as may the board's already aware, but I'm just going to go over briefly. There's one site, full movement site access on Rampart Road. You're approximately 100 feet south of the signalized intersection of Connecticut Avenue. That's been a big concern, I think, with the city. And we found during peak periods that it, you know, it, it did touch, you know, it caused some concerns with the closeness of the signal. So you know, Chick-fil-A, you know, in order to mitigate for COVID-19 conditions, they've modified their site to optimize the queuing and drive through and mobile order pickup line. This is not just at North the Norwalk site, but all their sites in the surrounding area. And probably other areas as well, but you know, I'm familiar with the sites, you know, in New York and Connecticut. So I'm just going to do a quick overview of how it's operating today. There's, if you look here, the, the red line is the drive-through queue line. So as, excuse me, as cars enter the site, they're either sorted into the drive-through queue where you can wait and circulate the site and then enter the drive-through line. And the Chick-fil-A employees will take your orders right here at the diverge point of the drive-through, once you split into two lanes. This is the only place that they can take the order point because that's how they track the vehicles once they, once they diverge. In the single lane, even with the, with iPads, for, for those who have gone to Chick-fil-A site, you know, they have a lot of employees in the parking lot to help the flow of traffic. And also with the ordering process, they can actually take your order and you can pay with a credit card on their iPad. So as soon as it opens up to the double lane, they can make that, that order, they can start the ordering process. The green you see here is the mobile order line. If, if you have the Chick-fil-A app, you can place an order, you wait in line. And then what you actually do is you come in and pull up into one of these spaces here. These are numbered spaces and a Chick-fil-A employee will bring you out your food to, to your car. And then they exit the site. So this is very similar to, I believe, what the town had, excuse me, the city had recommended on the, in the February meeting. And that, that information was shared with us. And I understand this is similar in nature to some of those temporary solutions they had presented. The difference is that with this mobile ordering, you can't get a double lane around the edge of the site. You can really only fit two drive-through lanes here. And the mobile order, as you can see here, is in the central part of their business. The, and it does also help, you know, flow of the ordering. So we evaluated the site, you know, obviously during the peak Friday and Saturday hours in early March, there, there was, you know, the site reached approximately 90 vehicles in a queue. So you, we, we saw some of the concerns that the city is having with, with queuing onto Rampart. So we looked into, this is, this image here is just another aerial view of how the site operates. So as I mentioned, the red line is the drive-through line. Cars enter, they circulate around the site. The orders are taken at the diverge point, and then they merge back into a single lane and exit. Similarly, the mobile order that come in, they get a number and then they exit. So there's, there's a couple of things we're looking at here to try to improve the flow. One of it, one thing is the ordering process. I mean, the more efficiently they can order and deliver food, then, you know, the quicker the cars can come through and the less queuing is going to occur. The other thing we look at is total space onsite where we can physically accommodate vehicles. So our recommended interim plan looks at ways of improving both of those things. So this is a plan that was presented in our letter. It's very similar to the existing condition, but there's, there's a couple improvements. With some geometric improvements at the entrance to the drive-through and with some curb improvements near the rear of the site, you're allowed to have a double drive-through lane, you know, a lot earlier in onsite. That just provides for a lot more space for queuing. And then the other thing it does is, like I mentioned earlier, the sooner that they can start making orders or taking orders, the more efficient the drive-through process is going to be. So right now, they have to wait until you get to the diverge point to take your order. If, if we extend it back, they, you know, they can start taking orders a little bit earlier in the drive-through line. Another thing we recommended was a second pickup location. This is common in a lot of newer Chick-fil-A's or other busy fast food restaurants is just to have a second lane to, that vehicles can exit to, and then food runners would bring out their order at that time. And then they would merge back into a single lane and exit the site. So, you know, with this interim plan, we believe that not only does it give you a lot more space for queuing in the existing site layout, we have about 92 cars can be queued onsite. You know, if everyone pulls up in time and under optimal conditions. With this recommended interim solution, it's approximately 121 vehicles with the extra queuing space provided. And then in addition to that, like I mentioned, we're hoping to optimize some of the ordering process so that, you know, they, they can push cars through quicker. And so with both those things combined, you know, we reduce the likelihood of queuing on the Rampart Road. You know, based on the weekday numbers and assuming the site operates as designed, queuing would be improved onsite, therefore, you know, that's what we'd recommend in, in implementing until a more permanent solution would be made. So that summarizes my report. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer those.
How, how long do you think it would be before you come up with a more permanent solution?
You know, I, I, I think that's
I can jump in there, Mr. Philman. I know that representatives of Chick-fil-A have been discussing what other permanent solution they can devise on an internal basis. They also have to deal with the landlord to consent and modify leases, but they are working on a permanent solution. And I would suspect that would be probably a couple of weeks, a couple of months for that design to be created and vetted and obtain landlord's consent. But recognizing that you, you are concerned of how, about how this was functioning and the impact onto Rampart Road and Connecticut Avenue, we wanted to come up with something on a short-term basis that would not require a lot of substantial site improvement, but give us at least another 20 cars to come off the road and circulate through to ameliorate the situation. There, we're actively negotiating with the landlord, but that's, and then, and that is something that Chick-fil-A would like to move forward with as quickly as it is able to do so. So we will be back to you. It's just a question of how long it takes for us to finalize the plan, have to get the landlord's consent and get the appropriate designs and studies and provide those to staff for review and determination as to whether or not we have to go through the full process of site plan review or if it can be by way of a modification or what.
Right. Was the letter from Valvoline shared with you? That was the letter that said essentially police closed Rampart Road, which effective, for one day, Saturday, I presume, effectively shutting them down because cars couldn't get into their site.
Yes, Mr. Schulman, that was provided to me this afternoon and I shared it with my client. That is not something we requested of the police department nor asked them to do or directed them to do. For whatever reason, the police department, I suspect, felt that that was the most appropriate method to handle the circumstance on that particular day. But we have no control over how that is handled, nor would we in any way seek to impact a neighboring property owner or business. It's, we, we have no control over that and we have no control over what the police department thought was most appropriate. This was the first that we heard that that was, and the first I heard that that was an issue or something that was undertaken. Police are onsite on Fridays and Saturdays to do traffic, to assist with traffic. They are also onsite to adjust the traffic signal at the intersection of Rampart Road and Connecticut Avenue to try to help traffic move through that intersection more speedily. But as far as what they did with respect to the entrance to the Valvoline portion of the stop and shop site is, that is within their control. And we did not direct them to do it and to take that action in any way, shape or form.
Well, you didn't direct them to do it, but it appears it was as a result of, excuse the expression, the success of Chick-fil-A. And perhaps Chick-fil-A ought to have a conver, if you're hiring the police officer, have a conversation with the police officer to see if there is another alternative short of closing Rampart Road so that your neighboring business is unable to operate.
Yeah, I would just say it wasn't the case when we were out there for our data collection. And again, just getting back to, to our solution, you know, we do believe that the temporary solution would help alleviate those concerns to queuing on the highway. So, you know, I, I can't speak to the conversations with the police officers, but you know, if the queuing on the highway is alleviated, it would alleviate that concern.
Can I just ask, I, I'm looking at the traffic report and it says that data was collected Friday from 11:00 to 7:00 and Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00. What time does Chick-fil-A close on Saturday?
I believe that they closed later in the night, but that was our understanding that that was the peak period on Saturday.
Okay, oh, okay, so you're, so it's, it doesn't increase in the later afternoon, early evening. It just sort of peaks out at around lunch?
Yeah, yeah, my understand, yeah, closes at 10:00 PM. You know, peaks, the peak period on Saturday was lunch was, was the information that we received. I mean, I, they, they may have, you know, dinner traffic as well, but that was the highest peak period is as far as we understand, so.
And Liz, what do you see for implementation of this plan?
And Liz, what do you see for implementation of of this plan here? How long would that take?
Well, if this, if the commission deems this plan as an appropriate interim measure, I would suspect we could have drawings prepared rather quickly and submitted to you and Mr. Kleppen for review with an application for permit and hope to modify the underlying approval as quickly as possible.
And when would you know whether the landlord is going to, you know, consent to an amendment to the lease agreement? You know, if there are any issues on that and how are we going to know if?
On a on the more long-term, more long-term solution that we're contemplating. But all I can tell you is that those negotiations with the landlord are ongoing. And as far as I can, as my understanding that they're, they've shared the a a concept with the landlord. We're just waiting for the landlord to respond. And as soon as that happens, then we can go through with the design drawings and the analysis necessary and then submit for that. But we'd like to get this plan, if this is appropriate and acceptable, moving forward as quickly as possible.
Attorney Sachi, I don't know whether it's appropriate or acceptable. We're not, we're not traffic engineers and we haven't had, or let me say DPW has not had an opportunity to get back to us yet on review of the plan. On the other hand, we don't want to do anything to hold up a potential solution, even if it's a temporary one to this, to this problem. So, I mean, I'd I'd like some feedback from the other commission members on this. But I think we'd like to see you give it a try. I mean, if if you fall on your face, you may have to simply go back to what you're currently doing on a temporary basis until we come up with something that does work. But if it does work, it certainly would be welcomed by us and welcome by your neighboring businesses.
Well, then, Mr. Mr. Schulman, if I may suggest, allow us to move forward with this plan and to submit to staff whatever appropriate site plan they deem necessary for us to implement this this design and move it forward.
Yeah.
And we, as soon as we can get this plan reduced to form and substance that is sufficiently detailed, we will do that. And hope that we don't have to return to you with that plan. If this is the plan that this will be the plan that we would submit to you for the short term, on the short-term basis. And we will do that as soon as we are able and then implement that design as quickly as we can get the work constructed. This work, as I am told, should not take more than maybe a week or so to implement once we get the zoning permit in place and and any, any additional review, I would suspect by DPW. But in the meantime, we can certainly share this plan with Public Works and see if they have any other comments or questions. But I'd like to move it forward as quickly as we can so we can, of course, address your concerns and concerns that the neighbors and the residents have raised.
And I think we would as well. I'd just like to get some feedback from the other commission members to see if there are other questions or any objections to recommending that they move this forward.
No, there's traffic now. They shouldn't move it forward.
Okay, Josh, Rod?
I agree, let's, I mean, but can't hurt to try it, I would think. I I have no ability to judge
Right.
the effectiveness, but I mean, give it a try, it's a temporary plan, let's see if it works.
Michael?
I would, I would say try it. Give it a try, so we can try to reduce the traffic in that area.
Is there anything we can do in terms of having a trial period? So because if if it tries and how are we going to know whether it works or not? It's, you know, I I feel like we're going to need some sort of data collection or some kind of evidence, you know, as to whether it's working or not.
I I I think that makes a lot of sense and I I think we should ask Steve in working with DPW, most, most likely with Mike Yosak, to suggest what kind of data we're looking for. And then ask the folks Chick-fil-A to begin to collect it.
Sure, we can ask, we can ask Mike that. I I was going to also suggest that we we will, I I'm sure we could probably get an answer from Mike and the T M P folks, probably within the next, you know, three to four business days at the most on the conceptual plan. And assuming that they're on board with it as well, then maybe then we can just give the green light to Liz and her folks to go ahead and and implement that. So that way we, you know, you have a little more reassurance it's been looked at. And I I would think on the backend, I think you'll know, you know, assuming we're still in a kind of the COVID state and there are people aren't eating indoors as much that, you know, whether it's working or not by the impacts on Rampart Road in in the Route One corridor as well.
Okay, that that sounds fine, then we'll leave it in your hands. Simply keep the members of the commission informed of how it's moving forward.
Certainly.
Okay.
One thing we probably will need DPW's permission is to adjust the curbing on Rampart Road, but that would be part of the review that I would imagine they would undertake and discuss with Mr. Kleppen. But if DPW is, I'll, for lack of a better word, okay with this plan as an interim and we can satisfy their can, their concerns, if any, we'll move forward with submitting site plans to Steve and to Brian and move this along as quickly as we can.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you for your time again.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, next item is an update on the status of North Seven.
Sure, and I can queue it off, Mr. Chairman. We do have Attorney Waters on the phone, actually online, there he is. And just to give you an update, the last we left it was quite a while ago where we we asked the applicant to go back and update the traffic report using more updated information from DOT based on the infrastructure improvements that they have planned. So the applicant has, you know, performed that additional analysis. We do have traffic peer review being done on what was together for that, so that that report's underway and it might be turned around in a few weeks. So I think Attorney Waters is here tonight to talk about next steps in moving the process forward.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, David Waters, General Counsel at Building and Land Technology. And and Steve has kind of summarized it quite well. The first step that there were two basic things that I know that the commission was interested in, the first one being traffic and specifically the improvements that we were proposing, the improvements that others had been proposing, timing on that capacity and making sure that if all of those improvements were being made, that it would actually solve the existing problems as well as the future demand. And we are working our way through that. We've submitted and as Steve mentioned, that's currently being reviewed by your consultants. So we should be able to hopefully at some point in the relatively near future, come back to you for a discussion on that. The other piece to it, though, was that as we've gone through the process, and it's been almost a year at this point, there has been a desire by the commission for additional design standards to be developed. And we've been certainly willing to do that and to work with your consultants to adapt those and so that they can be presented as part of the overall package. We understand that that would be working with your consultant. It would be on our dime and would like to be able to move forward with that to get your approval to move forward and work with your consultants at this point so that we don't end up in a situation where we have a, our next meeting is is on traffic and everybody hopefully says, yes, okay, we can move forward. And then we have to wait for another few months while we develop design standards. So we'd like to be able to do that concurrently. And that's really the the next step in all of this.
Feedback from commission members?
I think they're all, it's, it's, it's too late.
Feel like I should say something, David, because you waited so long, but sorry.
Sometimes you get the luck of the draw and being first on the agenda and sometimes you don't.
I I I I think it makes some sense to move or at least begin to move in in that direction in order to start moving this forward again after a long stall. There are, however, you know, big issues regarding what's going to happen with these, with these state projects and how exactly does, does that fit in with the larger project, not the design standards? And and that, I think that maybe that's the the reason I'm somewhat comfortable with what you're suggesting. Because we're not talking about moving the project itself forward. We're talking about design standards for the project. And it's for us to decide later how we move that project forward. You know, do we move it forward on a project-by-project basis? Do we move it forward as a, as a grand scheme? Those are decisions that are not required in order to start working on design standards. So I I you know, as long as the consultant continues to be under our control. So, you know, there's no question of impropriety. I'm, I'm not personally uncomfortable with what's being suggested here.
Now, Mr. Chairman, we've had some discussion, I've had discussion with Mr. Kleppen about the process that we would use. Clearly, we have our own consultants as well. We we clearly understand that we are not usurping your consultant to become our consultant. But by the same token, what we do know is that it probably works better on a collaborative basis to try and move things so that we make sure that we can anticipate what you would like in the way of design standards and things like that as well.
Yeah, I mean, this is some, this is new ground for us.
Yep.
You know, we're hoping as we move forward with our new zoning regulations to actually build in some kind of design standards or design, a design review with teeth. But in the absence of of that, this might be an interesting first step. Comments from the other commissioners, how do you feel about it?
I mean, I think that, you know, since the the word of the day is infrastructure, this is probably a time to push the push a project like this to see if, you know, some priorities can be placed on some of the improvements that will be necessary to to bring this project to fruition. So I think we should move forward on on both tracks.
I think Rod's right.
I don't know if I missed the point, but it seems to me that if there's two related things and we don't have to have them separated by three or four months, that's a good thing. I forget.
Well, you know, I have no problem with the design standards, but moving forward with the project as currently proposed, at at least in my view, doesn't make some sense. We 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 ought to do what we can, and there's, there's been some conversation about this, to give BLK some standing so that they they can go ahead and and put some pressure on DOT to start moving some of these projects forward. But given that there's no assurance that that's going to happen, I don't want to get too close to shovels in the ground. You know, before, before we have the design, design standards and before we worked out, because I think we're looking at some kind of a hybrid relationship with BLK, BLK, that BLT, that that we, we've never had before with a developer. And I think maybe it's appropriate, given the size of of the project here. Steve, we can't hear you.
Yes, I kept muting and unmuting myself at the same time, so sorry about that. One thing, just, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, and I've spoken to Attorney Waters about this. I I have had some conversations with Corporation Counsel's Office about the approval process and how that could potentially be staged, given the concerns about going forward too much without the the infrastructure improvements in place. So that's being looked at in more detail now. And we we might be on your next agenda or the following agenda as a follow-up conversation with them about that specifically. Just because I I I understand that the broader concerns about, you know, things could be great if the infrastructure improvements are in place, but as you pointed out, that there's no guarantee if and when that will happen.
So if if everyone's comfortable, I'd like to en- encourage Steve and Attorney Waters to start moving forward on this first step where where we have DeCarlo and Dahl working with with BLT on the design standards. And then, as Steve has said, certainly within the next month or so, he'll probably be reporting back to us on the this sort of hybrid relationship and whether it makes sense. So that acceptable to you for carrying us forward, at least for the next month, month and a half?
For Mark.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sounds, sounds like everybody's comfortable with that. And when Steve has heard back from British Council's office, we can, we can discuss it further.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, David, and thank you for being so brief. All right, industrial zone study status report. Steve, you want to talk about the hearing on the twenty-ninth?
Sure, so the the consultant and the staff will be more more so consultant, I should say, putting a presentation together for the public on April twenty-ninth. I think it's at six thirty P M. We targeted the, they they just sent me a draft of the presentation today. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but we'll be moving forward on that. And then we'll see how much public interest comes out of that and how many questions on whether, what the next step is in terms of additional public input before they start finalizing their recommendations. I should point out, there is another aspect to what we're trying to see if there's some additional funds within my department and also within economic development to take a deeper look at the waterfront area, because we just, that was one of the things they said, we can't really give it the attention it really needs under this scope and budget. So we think we have some funds, we're going to be able to shift around to put a little more money towards the projects. So it'll be kind of like a second phase to it that'll go on. But that that's kind of where things are at. So I think it, the the ideas, at least, you know, not every idea they have will come to fruition. But from what we looked at from the last time, there, there are definitely some outside-of-the-box ideas that they're thinking about. And I'm hoping some of these will gain some good traction with the with the folks that are interested. And we started as that you probably got an email today. I sent out the flyer and we're circulating that right now.
Okay, South Norwalk TOD study, the status report.
Nothing new on, and I'll let Michael chime in too. I know that we're looking at it like, the only conversations that I've been involved with since that we're looking at something as, and I don't know if it's going to work or not, but I don't know if you're familiar with what's called a transfer of development rights, which is basically you're taking density from Area B and putting it in Area A and putting it in Area B, with the idea being that there are several historic neighborhoods in just the the TOD zone in South Norwalk that we'd like to preserve and and hopefully they'll preserve and stay. But obviously, those property owners have rights to their property that they could redevelop. Property owners have rights to their property that they could redevelop under more, potentially more intense circumstances. So the idea is that they could, they could sell their, their development rights on uh, a portion or on their property, and then that development gets. Put in a more appropriate location, probably in proximity to the train station, so we're just having preliminary conversations on that now. Um, and working through some of the mechanics. We're not sure if it's going to pencil out from a economic standpoint, but we just wanted to give you a heads up that we're just something that's being discussed.
Okay, and um, the zoning uh, regulations rewrite?
So the consultant is uh, on board now, contracts are signed, P O's being issued. There, we met with them a week ago, we gave them uh, you know, our kind of. Rant list of things that were a problem, and we're gonna, they're asking, right now, basically, they're in the. Information gathering stage where they just collect all the data that we have, looking at all of our studies in depth, and then they'll start. Uh, working on the communications plan and setting up an additional public meeting, and then a, a larger, like. Planning session, public meeting mid-September where we really start focusing, focusing in and getting uh, public input.
Okay, um. And uh, that's it for the uh, other items. And Steve, I think you have one other thing you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, and, and there goes back to the industrial zone study, so we did put the moratorium in the industrial one zone on contractor yards and single-family dwellings. Uh, that was set to expire somewhat time in May. I, I, I figured the, you would probably want to extend that till the study was. Completed, and then you start implementing some of the recommendations, whatever those come out to be from the study. So if that's the case, we, we do need to do an additional public hearing on that, which we can schedule in May to, to get that done.
Well, I think we ought to move forward with uh, with that as well. Uh, first, first meeting?
Yeah, we'll do it at the first of the, probably the first meeting we have, just, we'll look at the agenda and see how uh, gruesome-looking it's getting as.
Okay. Good. Um. I need approval of the uh, minutes of uh, March uh, seventeenth. That was our last meeting, I believe.
So move.
Okay, Michael moves. There are second? Josh, Josh seconds. Why don't we do just a raise of hands, all those in favor? Uh, any opposed, any abstentions? Approved unanimously. Uh, and there's one other, uh, there's an item I wanted to bring up. You may remember at our last meeting, uh, we talked about holding a um. Uh, meeting with a, a couple of state legislators and maybe someone from um. Uh, the uh, the COG to talk about uh, all of the uh, housing legislation that's swirling around. Uh, I, we asked Steve to set it up. Um, and um, uh, it's gotten caught up in the, the bureaucracy that Steve has to report to. So uh, I'm in the uh, process of uh, probably get it out tomorrow, writing a note to the mayor. To, to ask him to please try to expedite it. Uh, because if we can't set up the meeting. In that, within the next couple of weeks. Uh, this is all gonna be over, whatever, whatever the House and Senate and governor is uh, gonna approve, they're gonna. Uh, prove, and uh, well, it seems to me we want to decide whether we want in, whether we want to have any input. Whether the mayor or the city wants to have any input, uh, it may be that we won't, maybe we, we say we want to sit it out. Uh, but I'd like us to be able to make that decision and not be uh, made for us. Um, uh, because we weren't able to educate ourselves. Uh, any other comments uh, from uh, commissioners? Okay.
I think what you just said was uh, was very telling, especially the last part about. Wanting to make a statement, but educating ourselves, because it doesn't seem to have stopped any of the other people that are writing in the newspaper.
No, that's true, all of the uh, uh, both op-ed pieces as well as the uh, editorial pieces. Um.
Astounding.
They've all, they've all been full on, on both, on all sides of this, and there are many sides. I, they've all uh, uh, have a host of inaccuracies. Um, and I don't want us to get caught up in that. Um, if we're gonna make a decision, it should be a decision based on the accurate facts. Uh, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, I think we should stay.
All right, uh, you know, that's fine with me. I can open a bottle of Scotch.
No, we'll, we'll, we're gonna turn the meeting controls over to you, because I think we're gonna check out.
I apologize for the late hour, although it's not as bad as some of our past meetings.
Could have been, right?
Yeah. Okay, so motion to adjourn, was that you, Rod? Oh, okay, Richard moved. Rod seconds, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, we're, we're adjourned.
Have a good night.
Bye.